Almost ready to go. All right.
Just make sure to read.
Thank you, and welcome to this meeting of the Westboro Select Board being held remotely on Tuesday, February thirteenth at six P M. This meeting is being recorded and livestreamed by Westboro TV. So I gotta pull up the. Sorry, my bad. I have the old minutes. All right, excuse me. May have been it. Okay, pursuant to Act two of the, pardon me, pursuant to chapter two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-three, this meeting will be conducted via remote means. Members of the public who wish to access the meeting may do so in the following manner. The link is is on the meeting agenda with a meeting ID and passcode. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so for reasons of economic hardship and despite best efforts, we will post on the Select Board's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Thank you. And with that, I guess we don't really have open forum today that anybody's here. Is is anybody here for open forum?
No.
No, okay. And I'll move past the hearing. Christie, would you like to start with the golf club building committee?
Sure. So as you saw in your packet, and as you know, we had talked about putting by me putting together a golf club building committee that would consist of seven members. We had wanted at the time a representative from the Advisory Finance Committee, one from the municipal building committee, and then also one from the Golf Club Building Reuse Committee and one Select Board member. So you had voted Ian to represent the Select Board, and we did get a couple other members from other committees, but it didn't, we didn't fully fill out the the all of the spots. So we didn't have a high level of interest for the three, for the three at-large members. And then we also didn't have anyone come to us from the former Golf Club Use Committee. And so in looking at that and talking to folks and looking at the current standing municipal building committee, which are, which also had two vacancies, my path forward or my next step or my recommendation is to to blend those two committees together. So the Golf Club Building Committee had, like, as I said, Ian as a Select Board member, also Earl Story as the M B C representative, both, both those folks serve on the municipal building committee. Then we also had an Advisory Finance Committee member and then two at-large members. So I've reached out to the two at-large members to see if they would be interested in serving on the municipal building committee. One has responded that they are interested, so can they can fill the one vacancy? And then I've also reached out to the Advisory Finance Committee member to see if he's interested in serving as well. So that would round out the municipal building committee. And then the municipal building committee would manage both the fit-up of the community center as well as the golf club building project. So I just wanted to bring that back to the board and just let you know that that's my intention.
All right. Christie, thank you very much. Shelby, you have a question.
So just for the, could you read off then the, all the names of the individuals so far that are confirmed that would be part of the M B C Municipal Building Committee?
Yeah, let me just. So we have Al Gordon, who is serving as chair. We have Earl Story, Peter O'Neil. I'm still pulling it up, I'm just doing it from memory, Ian Johnson. And then we would also have Tyler Wiseman, who was one of the at-large members who was appointed to the Golf Club Building Committee that would move over to the M B C. And then currently, we also have Jim Stewart, and we're working with Rod Schaffert, or I'd reached out to Rod Schaffert, who was voted as a representative of the A F C, just to make sure he's interested in making that transition. So it should be seven.
That, but plus the one person you haven't heard from, right, would be eight? Is that correct?
Well, that would be eight, and then we would have to look at the makeup of the committee. I did give a deadline of Monday, and I haven't heard from them, so I'm not sure if they've not gotten the message or if they're not interested.
Okay, but I guess I would just say if there's anything any board members can do to reach out to that person, let us know, happy to help.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'll just add, sorry, that the municipal building committee is going to meet tomorrow, or sorry, Thursday morning at eight A M to to get started.
So no action necessary by the board?
No.
All right, thank you, Christie. No other questions?
I would just say that I think this is the best approach. I mean, to me, it's disappointing that we weren't able to kind of carry forward with the approach of having a dedicated committee for the building reuse project and, you know, renovation project, but it is what it is. And I, I think, Christie, for, I know she spent a lot of time thinking about this. I think Tyler for stepping up and and his interest in municipal building committee in general. So thank you, and Ian, thank you for your continued work on this.
Yes, yes, no, thank you, Shelby. Yeah, and it's interesting. So for the, I went back for the, for the Golf Club Building Reuse Committee, we had twenty-nine applications for that committee. And but here for the building committee, we received two. So, you know, it sort of, it's interesting that the project isn't the same. But I'm surprised at the complete change in the number of interested parties.
Yeah, I agree.
But but thank you, Christie, for for coming up with a solution.
Yeah, I think it's a great solution. When I first saw it, I, I heard it, I thought it was a great opportunity to bring those two committees together, even though it wasn't ideally thought of that way. But I think with the advent of both the golf course building as well as the community center, I think there's a lot of opportunity to have people working on both for the town. So it's great, thank you.
Great, thanks.
Okay, next item, six eleven, do we want, do you want to do the Youth and Family Services Service Delivery Model at this point, or do we want to push that off?
Yeah, I think we need a little more time for that, so maybe the minutes or the appointments.
Yeah, we can start with the request for appointment. John Gelsich to the Open Space Preservation Committee. The discussion, or can I get a motion?
I would move to appoint John Gelsich to the Open Space Preservation Committee for a term to expire June thirty of two thousand and twenty-four.
Second. All right, no, thank you. Roll call vote. Patrick?
Welch, yes.
Shelby?
Marshall, yes.
Alan?
Edinburgh, yes.
Ian?
Johnson, yes.
And Kio, yes, five to zero. Mr. Gelsch, thank you for stepping up to this important committee and and for all you do for the town of Westboro. Much appreciated.
That's one of the minutes, Sean.
Minute, sounds good. And we've got the January twenty-third, twenty-fifth, and twenty-ninth. Can I get a motion?
I move, we approve the meeting minutes from January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four, January twenty-fifth, twenty-four, and January twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, as presented.
Give a second.
Second it.
Thank you, Patrick. A roll call vote.
Twenty, sorry, twenty-ninth, those regular meetings or executive session? I guess. Okay, so you know, I've read it, so it's just the executive session.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, sorry.
Sean, just one more thing. I had planned to abstain from the twenty-three minutes since I wasn't present, so I don't know if it would be possible. I know the motion is for all of them.
Gotcha.
I'll redo the motion. So I move, we approve the meeting minutes from January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four, as presented.
Second it.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Roll call vote, Patrick?
Welch, yes.
Shelby?
Stain.
Thank you. Alan?
Edinburgh, yes.
Ian?
Johnson, yes.
And Kio, yes, so four zero one.
Okay, and now I'll move that we accept and approve the meeting minutes from January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, and the open session, January twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, as presented.
Second it.
All right, Patrick, thank you. Roll call, Patrick?
Welch, yes.
Shelby?
A Marshall, yes.
Alan?
Edinburgh, yes.
Ian?
Johnson, yes.
And Kio, yes, five to zero. And so I think if I speak slowly, that gets us to six fifteen.
Oh, I see six fifteen on my.
There we go, just flipped, all right. So we can continue the hearing and status update for the two thousand and twenty-four Innkeeper Hotel Permit Renewal for Extended Stay America at eighteen hundred Computer Drive and nineteen Connector Road.
So it looks like, so you have some comments in your packet, but I believe we also have Chief Purcell on on the call if you have questions. I think we also have the individuals from the hotel here as well. Oh, and Fred Leonardo is also on the call.
John, Angela, Ryan, both lose here.
Thank you, sir.
There, District Manager Joffrey Neta is also here for extended stay.
Thank you very much. I'll leave it up to the board. I did see the update. Progress has been made, things have been scheduled. There are still one or two items outstanding. I think you folks, Shelby, go ahead.
Yeah, I think just because this is remote and we would typically tend to call people forward and give an update, if someone, Sean, maybe through you, you could provide an update on the progress that's been made so the public's aware, and then perhaps we can proceed.
Yeah, I don't know if, I saw the Deputy Chief had provided the update to us. Let me pull it up.
Yes, he was on site with me last week.
So Chief Purcell is on, if you want to ask him or Fred Leonardo.
That'd be, that'd be great, that'd be great. Why don't we get one from the chief if he has it handy?
Good evening, Pat Purcell, serving as Jaffa Chief. So the updates were relative to nineteen Connector Road, that we were still waiting for the final report on the fire hydrant testing as of four thirty today when we prepared for this meeting. I don't believe it's been uploaded into PermaPro yet. And the update for eighteen hundred Computer Drive is that two of the hydrants there require replacements, and we were advised that they would take about a month or so to get that that done. That's really where we're at so far.
And those are the remaining items?
Also, I'll let Fred speak to the other, the doors.
Okay, thank you, chief. Oops, sorry, Fred, I don't think we can hear you.
I can't hear you.
So I believe that I think I can fill in for him, but he doesn't get the audio fix. I believe we have contracted with someone to fix the doors and the permitting, they're still waiting for the permitting to go through, so they can reestablish the correct installation and put the emergency exit signs back in above the doors. Do I have that right with a nod, Fred? Yes.
Thank you, thank you, you're much appreciated. I don't know if either of the applicants have any updates they would like to give.
I think, oh, go ahead, Ryan. I was gonna just say, I think we're up to par with what was mentioned there. We are working with the fire hydrants to get replaced. I know we've ventured out to look to another vendor because the one was taking too long, but we are in progress, and we did upload, I believe, the quote to you take a look at.
Yes, I did upload, I did upload the quote for the new fire hydrants today. C F P was taking a long time, they said there were some delays, so we ventured out to another company, and they provided us with an immediate quote, so that's what was uploaded. And we're going to pursue going forward with that, so. That's what I have on the new, two new fire hydrants, so that was uploaded this evening.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your progress regarding this. And any questions from members of the board? Yes, Ian?
And just maybe for the one on Connector Road, what I read in our note was that it was the, Ryan, you might have talked to the Deputy Chief that it was tested, but you're just waiting for the test report to load or?
Yeah, so it was tested up, up to an hour ago, I was talking to my contact of C F P. So Joffrey and I are going to get on the phone with her tomorrow and demand that we have this within, I won't put a timeframe on it, but I'm going to tell her forty-eight to seventy-two hours, because the test was done about ten days, ten to fourteen days ago. So we should have the results anytime. They did tell me verbally that it was passed, so I just need that proof of the report. And as soon as I have that, it'll be uploaded. So we're going to try to get that as quickly as possible. Deputy Chief was out, so we did do all the new converters, so all those new converters and the stand pipes are all done. All my caps are on, so it's really just the two fire hydrants left and the the doors that they that they mentioned. Everything else has been completed.
Right, maybe just from our, thank you, Ryan, and I guess just from what I had, what we had in our packet, just as Shelby said, for the public, just to note that eighteen hundred, that while those will be repaired or replaced, the hydrants themselves are still usable at this time, but they, they have a drainage, draining issue. So the concerns with freezing, but it sounds, and at least what I, how I read this is that, yes, we want them, they need to get replaced, but for the time being, while we're waiting for that to happen, they are usable if something happens. Is that correct, chief?
Yeah, they are, they are usable right now, but just the problem is they don't drain correctly. The water stays in the barrel itself, and then they, they're apt to freeze, which, so depending on the weather, I think they work today, but we have a cold snap, then not.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Hey, gentlemen, thank you very much for your, for your continued participation here on the board, although it's required, and but thank you for continuing to move forward. Yes, Alan?
I guess I, given where we're at, I guess I'm comfortable moving to release the license for Connector Road for nineteen Connector Road contingent upon the certificate of inspection. If the only thing left is the uploading of that hydrant inspection report. But I, I guess I would want the hearing to continue for eighteen hundred because there are several issues, and we don't know the timing. You know, we know the intent is to have the hydrants repaired in March. The doors, they're contracting, the building permit hasn't been applied for yet. The work hasn't begun, we don't know how long it's going to take. And I guess I would suggest maybe continuing the hearing till March twelfth.
I would agree with you on that, Alan, I think that's a good approach. If that's a motion, I would second it.
Okay, before we take a roll call vote, I guess, was that a motion?
Well, we have to make the motion separately, and Shelby has her hand up.
I was going to say the same thing as you, Alan, so, and I was going to second it, so whatever that's, whatever we need to.
Okay, so I guess I would move to release the two thousand and twenty-four Hotel Innkeepers license for the Extended Stay Hotel, Extended Stay America Hotel at nineteen Connector Road contingent on the business passing an annual inspection and being issued a certificate of inspection.
Second it.
Okay, seal it, we'll decide. All right, roll call vote, Patrick?
Welch, yes.
Shelby?
Marshall, yes.
Alan?
Edinburgh, yes.
And Ian?
Johnson, yes.
And Kio, yes. And then, Alan, do you want to make the second motion?
Yeah, I I move to allow the Extended Stay America Hotel at eighteen hundred Connector Road to continue to operate on their current license with due diligence performed by town inspectors and to continue the hearing for a status update on Tuesday, March twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four, at six fifteen P M.
I think you said connective, I think it's computer drive.
Yeah, eighteen hundred Computer Drive, I'm sorry.
Thanks.
Second it.
All right, thank you. Roll call vote, Patrick?
Welch, yes.
Shelby?
Marshall, yes.
Alan?
Edinburgh, yes.
And Ian?
Johnson, yes.
And Kio, yes, five to zero. Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great evening.
Have a good night. Thanks, chief. Thanks, Fred. All right, next on the agenda. Now we move to Youth and Family Services Service Delivery Model.
So Sean, I'll recuse myself and turn my camera off, I'll just be listening in the background.
All right, thank you, Patrick.
So this is an update, we've obviously been talking for several months about changing the model in which we deliver services through Youth and Family Services, so specifically clinical services. And so what the board has in your packet is, in addition to the proposed scope of services, which is the same as it has been for several months, it includes now also a contract that specifies certain terms related to costs and liability and and points to that scope of services. And then also included in that is a memorandum of understanding, and that's really specific to how the two agencies will interact. So understanding that the town of Westboro will continue to have an employee in that outreach, outreach and resource coordinator role. And then we will have the outside vendor working in our offices, providing the clinical services. And so that that purpose of that document is to really give some clarity around that relationship. For the public, the contract and all these documents require, we have two, there's two full-time clinicians. They carry a caseload each of twenty to twenty-five individuals, so that's certainly more than we're currently able to serve in our current model. We would also have the clinical director, who currently works for Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services, would spend a minimum of twenty hours per week in the offices in Westboro, and they would work with us to help staff the office, exclusive of any time meeting with a client for the total of forty hours a week. So that would give our outreach and case, or sorry, outreach and resource coordinator ability to be out of the office during the week, to do some of that outreach work, but would also spend time in the office, so it would be a shared responsibility to make sure that we're accessible. We certainly would have conversations in the future about what the right hours are for that office so that we're actually providing the services when they're being requested, but making sure that we're staffing the office for that forty hours. We also have within their, the, the current, the initial first year cost as the way that it's proposed is a hundred ninety-four thousand, which is, which would cover that staffing, the, the individual clinical appointments, which we currently do, also lots of group work, which we talked about before, we had Shrewsbury Youth and Services come to a meeting and talk about all the work that they do sort of in the community. There's an expectation that that they would be working with groups in the community as we currently do, so making sure to maintain those relationships. I can tell you that the clinical director is very excited about getting out into the community, and I think that we really see the value in having our own employee working in that office. And I think that we really see the value in having our own employee working in that office in order to help make those connections and support those relationships. The youth and fam, the youth commission will continue to exist under this model and serve in an advisory role. Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services as an organization has a board of directors, which obviously they would continue to have. But the Westboro Youth Commission would continue to serve as an advisory body to. To both the, the vendor for the clinical work and also the, the employees. So. We worked really hard on these documents, lots and lots of conversations with existing staff, Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services. The Chair of the Youth Commission has been very involved in this. And I think that we feel like we've gotten it to a really good place. Currently, the budget documents for fiscal twenty-five represent our current model. And so assuming that the board is, is in favor of moving forward. Not asking you to sign any of these documents tonight or approve a job description, but just now that you can sort of see the full picture and the details, happy to answer questions, but just understanding if you're interested in moving this forward. And then we would update the, the budget documents to reflect this new model.
Thank you, Christie. Any questions from members of the board? Shelby.
So I have some questions and then I have some observations. I'll just go with questions first because I'd like to hear. Uh, if there are others from the board that might inform my observations, I guess, or thoughts. So Christie, first question is, uh, it was unclear in the document, although I think you've answered it, but the way it was worded. As to services being provided by interns only, it seems to be, it, it wasn't consistent as to when master's level interns are providing services versus master level clinicians.
Um, sorry. So it's both. So they, so we would hire, we would have two clinicians. Um, and then they would work in, in their internship, internship program into the Westboro site as well. But we would have two, we have two, we would have two dedicated clinicians and those folks do not currently work for Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services. They would be hired specifically to staff our offices in Westboro.
Okay. Um, and those are not interns. Those are clinicians. The interns are added for what purpose? Overflow, group work?
Yep. So group work, they do a lot of the group work, um, but they, and they also are added. As part of the intern, their internship program. So, um, Shrewsbury has, we talked about a really robust internship program. Which creates succession planning, but they're able to fill in for a lot of that group work that we heard about. I, I, I believe that they, they do also see clients, um, but, but we would have dedicated full-time clin, two dedicated full-time clinicians and then. Jen, as a director, does not really see clients, but she, she would provide the supervision for the offices in Westboro.
Okay. And, and so for continuity sake, if I'm an individual receiving some sort of services, counseling services. Then there would be continuity, but because you have those two clinicians that are being hired, maybe I'm seeing someone else. As part of a group work where I would meet interns, but I would have continuity of my counselors at a fair understanding.
That I believe so. I, I mean, I can, I would confirm that. I, I don't believe that they would move you to an intern, but.
But if I started with an intern, maybe, and that was appropriate, I would stay with that. I guess I'm just trying to understand their model of. I would imagine continuity is very important in these situations.
That, that's my understanding is that they wouldn't sort of bounce clients around from person to person. I don't know that we've had that specific conversation, but that's my understanding of how this works.
Okay. Well, perhaps that's just a follow-up then. Um, and so just in the contract then. There's a reference to both clinicians and master's level interns. So those are definitely different. People and levels. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
And if I can just clarify, when we talk about master level intern, these are people who generally have finished their degree. And are working towards their additional certification and state licensing. So they're not. They are fully qualified to run groups and to provide counseling services.
Alan, I'm not trying to be wise. Is that a statement or a question?
I was gonna ask the same thing, Shelby. You were being wise.
Sorry.
Okay. I, I just want, when people hear, you know, interns, they might have different impressions about what it is.
Well, and I just want to make sure. So Alan, that's your understanding, Christie, is that your understanding, just in their model? And I just don't recall this specifically being discussed. That's why I want to make sure.
Uh, yeah, I mean, one of the things that we found just attractive about Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services is their robust internship program.
Right.
So, uh, yes, that is my understanding of what Alan said.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. So just going back and forth between my notes and the screen here. So. Under. Uh, it says, okay, let me just find it. Sorry, you guys. Just give me a second here. I am under attachment A. And I was a little confused because under counseling services, so this is for the board's benefit, this is page twenty-three or twenty-four in our packet. The first paragraph says. Uh, clinicians to provide the therapy as Christie already outlined. In addition, ongoing case consultation and communication with schools, medical providers, state agencies, parents and other caregivers will be offered. These services will be provided at no cost to clients and insurances will not be billed, allowing the clinician to better show all residents of Westboro. And then you get to the next paragraph where it talks about the master's level interns. And the services that are, that are outlined are really identical, except it says, in addition. Ongoing case consultation, communication with schools, medical providers, state agencies, et cetera, et cetera, will be offered. These services will be provided for a small client fee or at no cost, depending upon client situation. So my question is. It, it seems odd to me that clinicians are not going to be charging, but master's level interns will. So that's my first observation. Go ahead.
So Jen spoke to that when he, she came to the board. So the, um. Because the interns require more administrative oversight. They do ask for a small fee, but they don't require it if someone has, has an inability to pay.
Okay. I, I do. Remember that, I guess, as a consumer, I'm not sure why I would be paying for a. Forgive the term, a less qualified individual and I'm not paying for a fee at the clinician level. So.
So that the clinician level, that, that their, their salaries and benefits are fully funded by this contract.
Okay.
Interns are sort of an add and value added. Um, and so they ask folks to pay a nominal fee. But I think Jen had, was clear that if there's ever an inability to pay, it's not even a question to, to waive that.
Okay. So, so that leads me to my next conversation that I don't see it in our packet, but I think it would be helpful to understand what is that fee schedule? Is it public? Um, and I know I'm doing a little bit of rapid fire here, but. Um, and what criteria is used to determine client situations? So. That additional information and clarity would be helpful, I think, to understand.
Um, I can find out about the fee schedule, Jen's response on. On sort of when the waiver is granted, it was simply that if it's ever, if a waiver is ever asked for, it is granted. So I, I don't believe there's a policy on that. It's just that if someone is requesting a waiver of that fee, it's granted.
Okay. I, I, I guess. From an equity perspective, I, I think some people, you know, so. If someone doesn't ask about the fee, then they're going to be paying it, but other people ask it. I don't know. It just sounds very loose to me. And I think we need some clarity around that. So that, you know, if I'm a client that I understand, I may be asked to pay a fee, but I also have the option to say I can't afford the fee. That understanding should be clear to anyone using Youth and Family Services.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying and we can put some language in there. It's, it's, it's all part of the intake in terms of someone's ability to pay. So. They understand that.
Sure. Okay.
You know, and so if I, if I recall, and this would be good to verify because I may, I absolutely could be recalling, but I thought it was a nominal amount too.
Yeah.
Like twenty-five dollars or something like that. But I, I don't recall it fully, but I didn't think it was, it's not like it's hundreds of dollars.
Right. Yeah, no, I, I understand that. And honestly, whether it's, you know, ten or a hundred, I just think we just. I think it's just important to have clarity around, around this. And it, it sounds like that's something we can, we can get so that. So that when we're asked or something comes up like I didn't know, then we, we have a clear understanding on the town side of how this would be handled. Going on with other questions here in the same section that we were just looking at under groups. So there is no reference to cost here, but yet master level, uh, interns are, and clinical staff are providing that. I'm fine if everyone else is that it doesn't say anything about costs. I just didn't know that because we talked about cost in one place and we're not talking about cost in another. It just doesn't seem to be consistent. It feels like this should say these, you know, this service is inclusive of. You know, of, of the town's contract. There's no additional fee.
So this is the scope that we've been looking at since November. And so that's what's pointed to in the contract. So. Everything in it as it's outlined, but I understand what you're saying.
And, and I guess I would say the same. So my comment is the same for workshops and training. And for both of these, both group services and workshops and trainings, there's no reference to a minimum number. Um, and I realize this is a new contract for all of us. So, um, but there's no minimum. So it's not, it's not like, you know, the. A minimum of X, you know, per year or per month or anything. Uh, will be provided. And, and I find that a little bit concerning. I'll, I'll relate that back to a comment that I'll make later. When beyond my questions. The language that is on page twenty-five, uh, in our packet regarding law enforcement, it seems to be sort of one way. Westboro Police Department will work with a contract as needed to support the town's youth diversion program. I assume it's reciprocal, like they will work with us, but it sort of sounds like it's one way. That was sort of the way I interpreted it. Maybe that's not the way it will play out, but that was just an observation. And. I have some questions regarding the oversight of the outreach and resource coordinator. So while I'm on a roll, I guess I'll just kind of continue here. As we get into the MOU and then I know we're not commenting on the job description specifically, but. The, it seems to be a little bit contradictory in terms of the supervision. It's. The job description says supervision by the assistant town manager. The MOU says that. But yet day-to-day oversight is being provided by the contractor. And I see that, I see this as being potentially problematic. Uh, an individual reporting to, uh, to, to individuals or more. I, and I also think that it could potentially be kind of. You know, inefficient. So I, I guess.
This was actually specifically raised in a meeting with, um, folks from the youth commission and some select board members were there. I can't remember who. Just in terms of the work, like the day-to-day working with and how those two bodies would work together. And so certainly the level of clinical knowledge that Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services brings. Is, would provide oversight to that, um, some, some of the work that that physician is doing. Actually was, I was identified as really important. And then, you know, but in terms of sort of discipline and benefits and following of the contracts and all of that, that's fully under the assistant town manager. There's no ability and it's very clear just for the public and the MOU that that is not the, um, that is not the responsibility of the vendor.
So I guess. I, I guess maybe my, my question would be then in section one point four of the MOU, then I think that's where it's referenced is. You know, oversight. Uh, you know, that, that to me seems supervisory in nature. That, that word is the one I'm hanging on. And I'm wondering if there's a better word that we might have there in terms of, you know, is it collaboration? Is it something, something a little more collaborative, um, rather than oversight? And, and I'm not asking for an answer here, but that, that is one place that I felt like. Could be potentially problematic in that as we move forward. The other thing on the outreach coordinator, there's a reference to that this person needs to adhere to contract or confidentiality and their other policies and procedures. And there's no reference to training that that person will receive on Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services, um, policies and procedures. Nor this, the outreach coordinator's responsibility to understand those kind of in the job description. So those two should sync up.
So we, we wouldn't put training in the MOU necessarily. I mean, this was really specific to. The contractor, there was a concern about the contractor's ability to have conversations about client situations with. Employees of the town and vice versa. And so this is what town council has put forward as a potential option for addressing that concern.
So, so I understand that. I guess I'm saying we're talking before in one point four about day-to-day activities and the contractor's role with the outreach coordinator. Um, I, I guess I don't see any harm in two point two talking about that, you know, there's, there's an expectation that the coordinator will receive training by the contractor on the policies and procedures. Something's got to tie back to basic, you can't sort of say that the person will adhere to something without. Balancing that, that they will receive training, I guess, is my, my view as an employer. So. So I, I guess I would. Um, leave that. So those are, those are my kind of comments at this point. And I have some other observations, but I'll, I'll defer to the rest of the board for. Their airtime. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, Shelby. Alan or Ian, any additional thoughts or comments?
No, I had a few, but Shelby covered them. One of which was the training in particular, um, because of the HIPAA requirements. That. The contractor has a legal requirement to do regular HIPAA training and document that. And so. The outreach coordinator would, I would hope would be part of that training. So that those conversations could happen. So. I'm, I'm with Shelby on that, that some mention that the contractor will, you know, include the outreach coordinator in their training on these items. So that there's familiarity there.
Yeah, thank you. Ian?
Um. Nothing, nothing new. I just get back on the. Section one point four and I had flagged it, but I. I guess I, I was okay with. Oversight, um, because I was thinking about it similar to how. And I know we've changed the position around, but how in essence that position would work if we had an employee, there'd be. Oversight. There. So I do think there's. You know, I don't think the assistant town manager is, is supposed to, has the overall oversight is not going to be day-to-day managing that position. So somehow I guess. I think there has to be some. Supervision there. I would expect there to be some supervision there. Otherwise it's a, you know. That person would be like, okay, what do I, who do I? You know, go to for advice? How do I, how does it work? So. I know collaboration was used, but I was okay with oversight, but I'd love to hear what others think there.
Thanks, Ian. Yeah, yeah. I don't know. I mean, potentially you could use the word maybe coordination. Um, but it, but it is also clear in that statement that down below it says the contractor, um, has no authority to impart discipline. Right. So, so it's.
Which I think is the correct, that is correct. That's what it should be, should stay within the town, but.
Right.
I think that the certification levels that are required of the contractor are. Are much higher than those, the, I mean, there are no certifications required for the outreach coordinator. So in terms of. Best practices and working through cases and case management. I think that's where we were comfortable with the word oversight.
Well, and and it's possible, I think Shelby, with your comment earlier about training. That as part of that oversight. You know, they are required. To provide training to this individual. For their in support of their processes and procedures. Maybe something like that goes into this. Component one point four. I did have one other comment. So if I'm remembering correctly. The masters level interns. I believe there's a distinction in what clients they work with versus the clinicians. And that and that the clinicians have sort of the. The primary. The most in need and the interns, I think, have a have a subset. I believe there is a distinction there and. I don't know if it necessarily has to be outlined in the contract, but I think as maybe as part of. The review of this at town meeting. Or at some point, maybe an update to. You know, what would be the expectation clinicians versus master level interns?
Typically, having some direct experience and awareness of this. You know. The interns won't provide any clinical services unless they're being supervised and having their cases reviewed. By one of the clinicians or a member of the clinical staff. And so the cases that would be given would be. Appropriate for. Not just. The patient, the client, but for the, you know, but for the intern as well. And that I don't think there's any hard fast rule about what type of cases happen. It's it's what. The masters level intern is capable. Of doing, you know, given, you know, given the supervision. In the case review that's being provided by the clinical staff and the clinicians. So I wouldn't. I wouldn't want to specify. You know, or try and set rules around that. I think. The expectation is that Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services will be following best practices. For the management of clinical staff. Which includes the masters level interns.
Yeah, I mean, we can get or we can try to work with them on some more verbiage around that, but to Alan's point, the idea of bringing on an intern is to get them to the point where they can. Go off on their own. And so they'll throughout the program, there'll be different levels of, you know, ability. The idea is that they would train them to a point where they were, you know, certified and also ready to take on caseloads themselves.
No, thank you, Christie. And so. Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services is providing has been providing these services for a long time within. The town of Shrewsbury, I believe, well, we are. And they they also provided to to multiple school systems or and they're certainly expanding. We are, I believe, the first or the. The first town they've added. To their capability. And and I think that's you see that in part of this. Negotiation and and these contracts, right? The their sort of. Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services is starting a little bit from scratch and in creating a new contract to provide these services to other towns. Thank you, Christie and and Kim, for all your work on this contract with Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services. It's come a long way. I think we're going to continue to learn as we go on this, but I am fully supportive of the model. And I look forward. To continuing to do this, Shelby.
Sorry, off mute. So I am very supportive of this model. Want to be very clear about that and and the work that's been done so far. I, while we are all talking, I want to go back to that word oversight and suggest a couple of thoughts. One is. I feel like oversight implies kind of monitoring of performance and delivering of results. And I think that's where for me it gets sticky with the supervision and the word oversight and potentially. Contradictory. Reporting streams for this employee and and the potential that that could, you know, cause in confusion. So one suggestion might just be direction, you know, direction of day to day activities, because I think that's what we're talking about. I I don't think we're asking him to. Be in the the weed, so to speak, of the day to day and that this coordinator, this person would work to understand kind of what what's coming up, what's a priority, so on and so forth. So that might be a suggestion as. A more accurate word. The other piece that I was surprised that we don't have in here and I would like to see is something around. You know, kind of what kind of reports the town will get and any sort of like, I'm going to use like KPIs or performance metrics. How are we going to oversee and determine that they are? Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services is delivering on what we want and what we expect. And there's the contract. Unfortunately, at this point is void of that. And so. You know, we have. Under our prior. Director, you know, there were some metrics that they were tracking. And, you know, we would see those in the annual budget. I don't have a copy of that in front of me. But some of the metrics, while they may not be the same, I would expect that we would want to have some reporting requirements in a contract.
So they they've already provided me with with an example of what they of exactly that for what they provide to Shrewsbury. So I I did think it was in the the contract. So if it's not, it needs to be added, but we fully intend on getting that those reports.
Okay. Okay, yeah, if we could see that, that would be great. And I felt like there was one more question, but. Just to be clear, on the job description for the outreach coordinator, Christie, it says. That at some point it says scheduling of appointments and intake is not the responsibility of the outreach coordinator. But the job description says may assist with appropriate referrals and linkages. Is that different? Are those two different things?
I'm just trying to pull it up.
Yeah.
Getting to that point. Sorry. Oh, go ahead.
Referrals and linkages is connecting them with other resources. As opposed to actually scheduling appointment times with specific clinicians or programs.
Okay, I was using the word referral broadly, like a referral to services and therefore. It sort of seems natural. If I'm referring, I may be helping to schedule. So. It's not my space. I don't operate in that. So I just wanted clarity.
So so I just wanted to add. Oh, sorry, Kim.
Yeah, I was just gonna say the intake we're referring to that is the responsibility of the clinicians is a much more detailed. Questionnaire and intake process with the clients to understand their needs and the service level they're seeking and. What's appropriate.
So it's more along the lines of a clinical or leaning clinical intake.
Yeah.
Okay.
It has a diagnostic code.
Right, specific to the the individuals seen by the clinicians, yes.
Okay, well, perhaps there's an opportunity for some clarity in the job description that just again, so that that's clear. And maybe if you're in this space as a as a layperson who isn't a doing outreach and and I'm not a mental health. Certified person, that that wasn't clear. So. Well, thanks for the opportunity to provide a comment. And and again, I'm very supportive of this. I just think this needs a little bit more work.
Thanks, Shelby. Now, with this time. I don't think the motion is required. Of the select board, I guess, just a general. Keep moving forward.
Well, so we're going to continue to work on the documents and get them to a point where everyone's comfortable executing them. The idea would be that this would start July first, so we have some time. That being said, the but as I mentioned, the budget currently is contemplating the current model. If if everyone is supportive of moving forward with this model, then I would update the budget to reflect this new model.
I am comfortable with that.
Absolutely.
So I I guess I would say I'm comfortable with it with an asterisk that the contract hasn't been finalized. So that I think it gives kind of us and you, Christie, some cover and protection that if for some reason. As we get to the final. You know, the the final signing of the paper, if there's something that changes along the way that's unexpected. That we. And I don't mean to imply that there's an opening to increased price, but and the cost of the contract, but. Being that. The contract ties directly to this, I I'm not comfortable in just kind of giving it a let's go forward and put it in without just noting. The contract hasn't been fully finalized. I just, I think it's the right way to handle.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I did say that I know that that's not ready for execution and and I had put in your pocket that I didn't expect that this evening, but. I'm confused as to whether or not that comment means that we should update the budget or not update the budget.
Yeah, so sorry for not being clear. So I think we can update the budget, but I think in the budget it needs to have an asterisk because beyond this conversation, I think the public needs to understand. AFC needs to understand when they're looking at it that, you know, as of today, February thirteenth, when that's updated. The contract hasn't been finalized. Now, by the time we get to town meeting, I would expect that we're there and we're done and that number is a firm number and we can remove that asterisk. But I think until that's done, we just need to be mindful of that.
So question or or point of procedure here. So we are. It's a different budget number. It's. It affects different line items on the budget. Net, it's a reduction.
No, net, net, well, net, it would likely be it net, it's actually just just about the same number. The 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 challenge is that the right now, the bulk of the funding of this department is in the salary and wages and it would move to expenses. So. I guess what I'm hearing from all of you is that you want to have the contract signed before town meeting. So.
Well, let me let me be clear. Do we think we can have it signed before town meeting? Was that your expectation or was it not?
Um, I I didn't think that it was it had to be. Everything had to be fully finalized by town meeting, but. If there's, you know, concern about that, I think we can do it. I have shared these documents with SYFS and they need to share them with their board. So I I think that we can do it. I just. I'm understanding that as a higher priority than I anticipated, but I don't think it's not doable. But I but it sounds like I should also update the budget, which I think makes sense because I I think we should have the conversation about what we expect to propose, which I think we all expect to propose this.
Yes, yes. Yeah, I just I think I would just like to see the contract. Version, whatever version draft we're on, the the next version before we. Feel absolutely confident that we're locked in with a number. That's all.
Okay, yep.
Yes, and this will be reviewed. With the Youth Commission. Again, prior to town meeting as well.
Yes, I believe on the twenty ninth. Great. Thank you.
Thank you for all your work on this. Next. Fiscal twenty twenty five budget update.
I just need to share my screen.
Oh, do Patrick, do we need to announce you're back?
Oh, right.
Patrick is back. Okay. Announced.
Yeah, I don't know. Is there a special process? I'll I'll give you a round of applause.
Do you see the PowerPoint slide?
Yes.
Okay, so this is just an update and we'll post it on the website, but just wanted to give an update since we last talked about the budget, which was at the. January twenty fifth budget summit. Since the budget summit, we've had several adjustments in different lines. I'm going to start at the bottom. Our biggest adjustment, which we learned about during the budget summit, was that our state aid was actually coming in about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars less than we had anticipated. As I mentioned to the the board and the AFC at the time. I think that we get a lot of comments about how we are too conservative. So this is a really good example of why being conservative is a good thing. We historically have netted about over three percent increases with our. Are historically going back, you know, I think. My my tenure as town manager, I've netted about over three percent increase in state aid. This net is a little over one percent. So so it's less than we thought. That being said, I was on. A call today. The MMA is advocating for increases in chapter seventy. And certainly we know that this is only the beginning of the budget process. But currently, our estimate was higher than what we have in house two. So. That adds about eighteen dollar nineteen dollars to the to the average single family. Since then, we've also updated a few other budgets. So I'll just go down the list. The Historic Commission and they're on tonight to talk about their articles, but. Their current employee in that department has. Retired. And so I've met with the Historic Commission folks and we talked about. Sort of restructuring that and looking at kind of the responsibilities. And potential future additional responsibilities of that of that office and where they might fit in. And we did meet with community development. So we do think that community development does take on a good amount of of some of this work because it was only a nine hour reposition. And so going to continue to talk with the planning department and even, oh, sorry, community development about this. But we did have reduced the salary and wages down to five thousand dollars, which would cover a board secretary. That would cover the meetings for the Historic Commission and do the minutes. And then potentially help with some additional responsibilities, grant applications, things like that. So so we have reduced that line and then also in the expenses. We we reduced the line by five hundred dollars for office supplies, things that haven't historically been used, things like that. So. So that's a dollar twenty three of the estimated impact. I think it's it's good progress. It was great conversation. Really appreciate the Historic Commission having these conversations. One of the things that we talked about just immediately, just for the board's information, is the. The possibility and the opportunity to staff the office with some senior work off folks. So I know that the chair of that commission is is working with. Senior center on that. Finance department. We had, we had already at the budget summit updated. The the budget to reflect a full twelve months for the payroll, the new payroll position and the new town accountant position. So this, this reflects just a little bit more in the salary and wages based on some more information we have, which is that we are hiring a new treasurer collector. We will invite her to your next meeting to be to concur with the appointment. And then she will start, I think, March eleventh, pending a background check and all the bonding and things like that.
Well, that's worth an applause. Congratulations.
Thanks. We're very excited. Information technology, we just continue to look at the budget and things that we could potentially pull out to use free cash for. So this is a really. Sort of small item, but the fire, you you might remember that one of the P I Rs that was proposed with information technology was fire department core switches. It didn't rise to the level of being in the capital plan, which is why it was put into the budget. But it is really, it's a one time cost. It has a shorter useful life than most of the things on the capital plan, but an opportunity. Nonetheless, so we pulled that out and it's an article on the warrant. A free cash article. Insurance, typically we love to give you this great news that we get to reduce the insurance budget by a lot of money. We actually, we've we're reducing it by about twenty thousand dollars. But it is really good news because. The increase that we have been quoted from our current insurer is five percent increase, which if you work with insurance companies, that's actually a really good. Really good. Increase for this year. Really, when we're looking at other communities and other purchasing groups, five percent is really. Really, when we're looking at other communities and other purchasing groups, um, five percent is really great. So we had budgeted five point five percent, we took a little bit out, but because of some of the, um, additional folks that we know are coming on, um, also some new positions, obviously, we always budget a little bit extra. So that's a reduction. And then in, in our budget, we did add five hundred dollars salary and wages. Um, that's because we have the municipal building committee board secretary in our budget and with sort of the increase in meetings, we just added a little bit of, a little bit of additional funding to that, to that position. We have also added two thousand dollars to expenses. There's a, there's a very clear line item in our budget to fund the annual audit. And for FY twenty-five, we had funded it at twenty-eight thousand and we just got our bill for this year and it was thirty thousand. So we've just upped it to thirty thousand so we can cover that for next fiscal year. So our net is an increase from the budget summit, um, of thirteen dollars and forty-eight cents to the average single family. So we've gone from the nine seventy-nine that we looked at, um, at the budget summit to the nine ninety-four. So this is just an update to our excess levy capacity.
Christie, can I just go back, sorry, the, the two slides? So what? And then we talked in this average single family increase. What's the dollar amount? Net dollar amount of that prior page with the reduction in state aid, so reduction in revenue and also reductions, so it's a hundred thousand, a hundred eight thousand, something like that?
Oh, sorry, all of it together?
Yeah.
Well, no, so it actually, because the, the one fifty-one is a revenue and then this is an expense.
Yeah, it's net, so revenues are down one fifty-one, but expenses are less by forty-three, so.
So right, so yeah, yeah. About one oh eight, yeah, roughly, yeah.
So yeah, I mean, you probably know why I'm asking the question, the questions, if we were to try to keep something, keep numbers steady, it's a hundred eight thousand of in essence, additional reduction that would need to happen or increase revenue that would have to happen to get back to the original number.
Yeah, get back to that nine seventy-nine.
Quick, um, question. Christie, um, so when looking at the select board, I, I think there's a twenty-five hundred dollar item we could use to offset that increase. And that is the salaries and wages of the members of this board. I do see it back on this year's budget. I don't know if it's something that we need to talk to every year.
So we did, we took it off a couple of years ago. Um, I, I put it back in. Given the, just frankly, given the number of meetings that this board has and the amount of time that I know that you all spend, it felt right to to put it back in at this time, um, but it's certainly your decision.
I'm fine with taking, I'm fine with taking it out.
I've never accepted the stipend, so at the very least, you could, if, if we don't want to take it out, at the very least, you could lower it to two thousand. Just say stipend everyone but Alan, so.
You can make that fifteen hundred, take out Johnson.
Thousand, take out Welch.
No pressure.
So I, I'm fine with removing it. I, I do think that, uh, increased, Christie, I appreciate the point you're making that given the role that we play and the time that we put into it, not only at these meetings, but in other capacities as select board to, you know, liaison and board representation, et cetera. You know, that there is, there is a lot more value in what we do, quite frankly, than twenty-five hundred dollars. And I know none of us do it for the money. I certainly don't. So the money makes a point, um, that I think taxpayers, quite frankly, I'd like them to sort of appreciate. But I'm fine in removing it, um, for the obvious reasons of the, the, you know, that I think, Ian, you were suggesting, um, in terms of getting at that one oh eight. But I do think that the board and and the public needs to be cognizant of what, you know, what we're tasked with and what we do, um, at zero.
Oh, thank you, Shelby. Yeah, and and I think part of the reason I mention it is because I, I don't know that any of us has ever taken, if we've taken it, we've donated it, right? I mean, I don't know that, so. But yeah, I, I will leave it out if.
If you want to take it out, I think you should take, make a motion or.
Yeah.
Vote on it.
So, Ian, do you want to make that since you started it or Alan, someone?
Well, I didn't start it. That was, that was Sean, but I'll make the motion that we, uh, I'll make the motion that we remove your, zero out the account fifty-one oh eight board member salary under the select board town managers. For the department request being zero.
Edinburgh seconds?
So just a real quick question. I want to make sure I'm completely clear on this. The, the twenty-five hundred dollars that is mentioned here under the net change that Christie outlined is for the purpose of supporting those additional functions and costs that are being bore. That is outside of that line item. Is that correct? Or is that this, are we zero?
Yes.
Is this line going out as well?
No, this is, this is separate.
I don't have the budget put in front of me, so.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, those are separate.
They're separate, okay, thank you.
Just the, just the select board salary.
Yep, that's why, that's why I called out fifty-one oh eight, so.
Well, that's the reason why I'm just saying in this slide, it says changes salary and wages, manager, select board, five hundred dollars. But that's a different five, it's a different line item, is what I'm hearing.
That's, that's for the municipal building committee board secretary.
Okay, all right, yeah, thank you.
Yeah. So, um, all right, we've got a motion and a second. Uh, we'll call vote. Uh, Shelby?
Arsh, yes.
Ian?
Johnson, yes.
Patrick?
Welch, yes.
Alan?
Edinburgh, yes.
And Kio, yes, five to zero.
Okay, thank you. So just showing since the budget summit, what the changes, I, I'll just, I'll note that our percentages for the town budgets has gone down to the six point five one, and then this is the new uh, number, and then for fixed costs, our percentage has gone down. The actual impact of taxes has not really changed, um, just based on the fact that the numbers are, are small. So this is just, I just wanted to bring back this chart, um, just sort of showing our historical use of free cash, um, to lower the tax rates. So if we were to not use that four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we would have, the, the increase would be a thousand and fifty-five dollars to the average single family. And then this is just showing our use of free cash, so. That's my last slide, so, um. So just kind of going back to the slide, one thing that I wanted to bring up is, um, there, we still have one very, I think, one, one opportunity that I think could be very significant in terms of impacting the budget, and that's, um, our debt budget. We will borrow on March sixth, and that's when we will know what our costs will be related to debt. Right now, we've projected, uh, an interest rate of five percent. When looking at what's happening in other communities, we believe that that could go down, but that's based on advice we get from our financial advisor. And so I think at the March twelfth meeting, depending on how that has come, has come out, we could have a conversation about the use of some, of additional free cash to lower the tax rates. You know, that we, this, this four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we've been doing it for a couple of years, it is a structural deficit. Structural deficits, we all know, are not good. And that's why I would, I think that we could think about tying whatever additional use of free cash to our expected first year cost of debt for the community center. Understanding that because that's declining debt, um, it would actually be a little bit cheaper in the second year. It's a brand new cost to the town, so it's really sort of deferring that impact for one year. And then you're tying it directly to something as opposed to just putting a sum of money against the tax rate. So, um, I, I don't have a number for you at this point because we haven't done the borrow, but I think that that's something that we could consider um, in light of the, the current estimated increase to our single family.
Shelby? Make sure it's open.
First, sir, Patrick.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Christie, could you go back to the slide prior to this one, please?
Uh, no, one more. I'm assuming, sorry.
Yes, I love that slide.
It's a beautiful color of teal.
Let's talk about that. Oh, my gosh. Okay, so you just kind of went too fast for me on this one, so. So Worcester Regional Retirement, okay, so Assamit Valley, so correct me for my, that, that's a new number you're showing there and a firm number? I, I don't recall seeing Assamit unless I missed it. I thought that was one of the numbers outstanding.
So the, the final, oh, sorry. The final number, um, so you want to see it again? The, the final number hasn't been issued as our final assessment because their assessment actually is also based on the governor's budget. But this was the estimate that we received from them, so it's not a hard number, but I don't think that we should expect it to change much. Worcester Regional, we do feel that that is a hard number.
And, um, just because you mentioned the beginning and then you just mentioned it now around state aid. I, I guess, um, it's been a long time since we've seen this sort of impact from the state level that I can remember in terms of civet going down, but maybe my memory is short and I'm wondering if the board should be writing a letter, um, to our representatives, our senator and to the governor. Uh, I mean, I think as a community, we've taken on a lot from the state that it's handed out in terms of welcoming residents to our community willingly and in, in an open arms sort of way, and, uh, this one really hurts. And I'm very upset about it. Because I think we do an excellent job, Christie, through your team and all your departments and the schools, I'll include them here, to manage our budgets, you know, effectively and, um, you know, certainly with, with a, a clear eye toward the impact of taxpayers and you know, to see a two percent plus decrease potentially, or call it two percent, uh, from the state is, um, disappointing beyond words.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would just, I mean, I certainly wouldn't discourage writing a letter. I think, um, you know, we did get, we did get a three percent increase in our unrestricted local aid, which is, um, which is higher, was higher than the consensus revenue. So that's, that's good, but that's a smaller amount than our chapter seventy. Um, and so it might be that we would sort of jointly write a letter with the school committee or folks from the school side about the per student, uh, increases.
Yeah, I think, I think that's, that probably is a good thing to do and to Shelby's comments about welcoming in residents and school, more school age children on behalf of the state and, uh, would be a good rationale as well for combining together with the schools and us and writing a letter.
I can bring something back to your next meeting, um, after I work, I can work with Amber.
Um, gee, sorry, Patch, before I go, do you, do you, do you need any sort of motion to move forward on that or?
No, I'll bring it to you to approve at your next meeting.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Patrick.
Yeah, uh, Christie, if you go to the slide, uh, you had with the, um, that you ended on before we roll back. Yeah, this one. So, um, refresh, my, my understanding on free cash and stabilization at thirteen point zero five percent, uh, the financial, uh, the fiscal policy also states, I thought, um, some guidelines or expectations around each one of those individually. And I'm just wondering where we are, uh, in the use of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, against free cashes to, as we consider options here and better understand the, um, the impact of the borrows. What our options are. I'm just curious as to what that threshold is on free cash as well.
So I don't have it, I don't have it handy, uh, the, the actual, so it's five to seven percent for free cash and five, seven percent for stabilization. I don't have that. It's all, it's, we're, we're well within our ten to fifteen percent for the combined, which is what we typically show, but I can certainly look at that. So it would give us some flexibility, um.
Yeah, this, we're, we're skewing it too much, like if stabilization is really on the up, you know, it's.
Yeah, I mean, stabilization is certainly lower. Um, as we talked about last year when we funded stabilization, we're sort of, you're sort of chasing that number because as obviously as the budget gets up, the percentage goes down. So we're, we're probably a little bit under the five percent for stabilization, um, and then higher on free cash.
Okay, Christie, when you, when you, what you showed in the budget summit was exactly that. We were under for stabilization. We were over at the time for free cash.
Yeah. We since updated, uh, this, this number that you, you have in front of you, the thirteen point oh five is based on the updated operating budget number, um, which, which is not very different. Um, and then also, um, all of the articles currently on the warrant that include free cash, understanding that you do have some articles on the warrant that have not identified a, an amount, so. I expect more free cash to be used.
Yeah, when I did my count, I think it was twenty-four of the forty articles on version three were identified with free cash or a variation of free cash and something else. So. Thank you.
Yeah, so, um, this isn't about percentages, but this shows that we're, um, so this is for the entire fiscal year, so this includes about one point three million that we spent uh, free cash in October. But, but with October and annual town meeting, we're up to the four point four percent, which was, that's around thirty percent of our free cash, which is where we were last year.
I'm sorry, Christie, are these the fiscal years or what's this?
Uh, so this shows how much free cash we've used in each fiscal year. The label's at the bottom. John and I were just talking about kind of updating the way that we present this, but, but the free cash that we're using in fiscal twenty-four was certified in twenty twenty-three, and so that's why we're saying fiscal twenty-three, but it's really the money available in fiscal twenty-four. So we have fourteen point nine million in free cash to use in fiscal twenty-four, um, and between what we've spent in October and are proposing currently to spend at the annual town meeting, we're up to four point four million.
Great, thank you. Uh, Ian, yes?
Yeah, Christie, just, um, going back to, um, your comments on the borrowing. Hey, and I might have missed it. I'm assuming that's a long-term borrow that we're going out for, if it's at that level or is that short-term borrowing?
Uh, long-term.
And is March kind of our deadline? We have to go out at that time?
We, yeah, we, we always go out in March. Uh, when we talk to our financial advisor, and I'm not sure, given your question, if you agree, but, um, you know, they, things are favorable, seem to be favorable right now. We, we have our, our ratings call this week and then we've already scheduled to go out.
Okay. That's why I have an advisor, right? I may know expectations in the market that rates are going to go down later this year, but it's going to be later. That's the reason I was asked the question, but again, I'm not a municipal finance person, so that's, I don't want to disagree with our advisor.
Any other questions? Oh, go ahead, Christie.
Oh, no, I was just going to say that this is just really to provide you with an update. And I'll continue to, to provide you with an update. I I wrote a couple of times in your pocket to bring your budget books, but since we're not all together, it doesn't really matter. So I'll get new pages to all of you and continue to keep you informed. Um, but I do think that March twelfth meeting, we'll have, you know, sort of more to talk about. And unfortunately, it's, it's getting really close to town meeting at that point, but it'll be after the, the borrow, so.
Right, no, thank you very much, Christie. Looks ready to move on to the warrant article discussions. Starting with the, uh, historic commission, bylaw change and funding for professional services.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
Can you hear me? All right.
Yes.
Uh, my name is Christian Hedrick. I'm the chair of the historical commission. Here to talk about the two articles we have, uh, on the warrant. I have a little presentation I just presented to the finance committee last week. I can put that up. I can kind of go through it quickly if you'd like. Okay, why don't we do that? Okay, why don't we do that? All right, did everyone see that?
Yeah, I just want to real quick, Christie, uh, as we get started onto this, um, with all the changes on version three, what numbers on the warrant are, these are, oh, 12, is it still 12 and 31?
No. They're 28 and 14. I have them right there.
Okay, terrific.
Sorry. It should all, it, it should be consistent with what I provided you in your pocket.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sorry, my title there, uh, hasn't been updated, so. Sorry about that. Um, so 28, I'll start with that. That's pretty straightforward. There's very few actual, there's like literally one word and one number that we're, we're proposing to change. This has to do with our review of, uh, demolition permits. So typically, we receive a demolition permit, uh, and we have 15 days to make a kind of decision, declare whether the building was historical or not, historical, architectural, interest, et cetera. Its cultural significance to the town, et cetera. It's a lot of decisions to be made. Often during this time period, we, uh, if we don't have what's called a Form B completed, we have to hire a consultant typically to, to create a Form B for us. Um, I can explain that a little bit later, what that is. Uh, that's the other article that that, uh, other warrant article that I'll be talking about. Um, and so basically it becomes this crunch time where often we're not able to hire the consultant to do this, uh, within that amount of time. Typically, a consultant needs at least two or three weeks, in order to complete one of these forms. Sometimes it can be done within the 15 days, but 30 days gives us a chance to review it more thoroughly. It gives us a chance to meet instead of calling a special meeting because we only meet, you know, once a month. Uh, so the goal here is to give us a little bit more, uh, leeway here and trying to, um, trying to determine a structure's, uh, historical significance. Yes, so that, that's basically just, that's the gist of it. I'm happy to answer any questions about this one first before I move on to the other one. Or we can, I can answer questions at the end, too. That's fine.
Well, why don't you take your cue now? Uh, Shelby?
You so much, Christian, uh, for coming on tonight. Question on language that's not being changed, but just if you could help, uh, myself and the public to understand. So it says below there that the commissioner shall, basically you can issue, not issue a demolition permit, um, for 270 days. You can order that that be done. It sounds, the way the language is written here, it sounds like that's a firm number and it's, there's no flexibility. Am I interpreting that? So if, you know, it's not 180 days, it's 270 and that's the number?
I believe that's the case. Yes.
Okay, I just, that's the way I was reading it, but.
Yes.
Okay, okay. And, um, yeah, I think that was, that was my only question. Uh, having been at your last Historical Commission meeting, I know this was discussed, so I had a heads up on this. Thanks.
It's a, I mean, that's basically nine months, right? Yeah, it's, there's some towns have a six-month or a 12-month. I think, I think when it was originally written, the idea was to sort of settle on nine, nine months as the kind of agreed-upon delay. And I think that that's the, I think that's what it ended up being. Uh, that was before my time, but.
Yes, it, it does, it, it does look, as I read that closer, and I apologize for interrupting, it looks like there is some leeway that the commission, working with the commissioner, could determine that if the applicant had made adequate, you know, kind of attempts and was unsuccessful, that, um, uh, it looks like maybe that, that 270 could be shorter.
Okay.
That, that's the way I just read that. So prior to the expiration, so.
Oh, right, okay.
Apologies for the question then.
I'm sorry.
Uh, Christian, what, like, how often do you, um, receive demolition permits?
Not too often. Um, last year, we didn't receive any. The year before, we received, I think, maybe one or two. The year before that was similar. Um, it's not a common thing. But but the, the issue is when we don't have a Form B and we can't make a decision that quickly, that's, that's when it becomes sort of an issue. There have been times where we've had a Form B to make a decision. We've been able to kind of, obviously, in the past, we've, we've, uh, tried very hard to make that 15-day, you know, some of them are very easy. For us, you know, we're able to meet and we're able to discuss it. We're able to pull a Form B or we don't, sometimes don't even need the Form B. You know, sometimes it's a clear-cut case, um, but sometimes it's not a clear-cut case and it requires a lot more kind of effort on our part. So again, not a lot. It's a, you know, a few, I think the most that I've seen in my time on the commission is maybe two, I believe, two in a year.
Imagine too, you get one a week, the fourth, uh, the 4th of July, it's going to be tough to get a response back to anybody, you know?
Exactly.
Day after Thanksgiving or something.
Right.
And I, and I put this out to other members of the board. I, I think that also would bring you closer in line with maybe the zoning board in terms of timeframes and, and expectations. I, I'd have to take a look at that. But, um, but this seems reasonable. Um, any other questions or comments from other board members? Yes, Shelby?
I, I think, Christian, you said you're going to talk about it, but I think for the, for everyone's benefit, talking about what the Form B, it is, what, what it is, who can file it would be helpful, I think, for the next part of the discussion.
Absolutely. Yep.
Is, is that, I got you. Is that a segue?
Sure.
To the other article?
Sounds good. We can always, um, come back to that first one, no problem. Uh, so this is the next one, Article 14. This has to do with, uh, what's called a survey. And, uh, right now, it's a pretty short wording, but we're looking for some funding to carry out, to try to complete the town's survey of potentially historic, um, structures. So I can, we can come back to that a little bit later, but, um, I will just go on to here this little few slides I have for that. So we're obviously mandated to protect and preserve historic structures, properties, cemeteries. We deal with all these things, archaeological sites in the town. So far, the inventory is not completed. Takes a lot of time, it takes a lot of effort and some money to complete an entire town's inventory. Um, the MACRIS, I put that there, Massachusetts Cultural Resource Information System, that is a, um, database basically held by the, by the Commonwealth, uh, by the Massachusetts Historical Commission. And they collect an inventory, all of the historic properties that people submit on there through this Form B that I've been discussing. And that's the kind of formal analysis. Form B is for like a, a, a building. Um, you can do different, different form letters or like landscapes or districts or things like that. Uh, but we're talking specifically about the Form B, which are structures like buildings. So as such, we're trying to initiate this targeted, community-wide inventory to, uh, achieve the completion, basically, at least up until 1900. That's kind of our first goal here. Um, and this is partly inspired by our town's master plan that's calling for renewed focus, uh, on this inventory task. There are these couple action items here. Um, and we haven't really been significantly updating MACRIS since the 1980s. So there are a lot of gaps and, uh, some of even what is in there existing could be, could use some updates. Um, and we did some research. Uh, we did a lot of, some members, uh, reconciled the assessor's database and we kind of pored over this in our meetings over the last year to try to like, figure out which properties have been, um, neglected or left out or potentially, uh, unidentified, et cetera, for a whole variety of reasons. So here's the master plan initiative that just kind of states it in there to address these gaps in the existing MHC inventory, which is on MACRIS. Um, and we had in here such as post-1930 buildings, um, we sort of technically could go up to 1950, but we thought maybe we would start with up until 1900, at least for this warrant article. Um, if we just take a quick look at some of the, and these are sort of what we call undocumented residences, right? Up to and including 1900 on the left, the assessor and our, sort of reconciling that with MACRIS, et cetera, shows about 587 residences. 380 of them are about, about single-family, and then there's also multifamily, that's just two and above. Um, MACRIS shows about 506. So, uh, and then if we go to 1970-ish, which, you know, isn't really in the discussion tonight, I just wanted to show it to you in terms of like growth of Westboro, things really increased significantly. But we're going to focus over here. So the total basically in our gap up until about 1900 is about 81. So that's where we get our number. That's where I base my, the, that's where we based the, uh, the budget number that we're asking for. So this, we're considering this a kind of a phase one effort to, to get up to about 1900. Um, and then this is again, kind of extracted or, um, abstracted from our huge list of, um, uh, Excel spreadsheet of all those residences that we've been trying to figure out and track down. Some of us involve driving around and trying to make sure some of these are still existent. Um, and sort of where they are. Every once in a while, a house will move from one place to another place. That's also a tricky, uh, a tricky aspect to this. Um, so a- anyway, the number that, that is kind of, we've come up with, that we're pretty happy with is about 81 houses. A couple of them may be demolished, but we, again, all of this requires a substantial amount of, uh, footwork and, and research. So that, I just took 81. You might be wondering, well, how do you get 81? Well, the missing number there is 300 because that was one of the last, um, that was the last fee that we paid for a Form B to be completed by a consultant. These range from, huh, you know, anywhere I've seen from mid 200s to even up to $500. But often when you, when you put them together or if you hire someone to do multiple at a time, there's a kind of, you know, you can get a deal uh, on some of these. So that's, we were just taking our average of our last, the last one, that how much that cost us was about $300 to do a Form B, which is a pretty good deal considering all the time and research and effort that goes into producing this, uh, document. And so we just took that number, 81 times 300, we got, uh, 24, uh, 300 there. So if we were looking ahead up until 1945 or 19 even 50, we're talking, you know, another 167-plus properties. I think that maybe that's up until 100, uh, 1950, actually, but anyway. So let's see. So that, that's basically the gist of what I have. I can, um, are there any questions at this point? I'm happy to explain the Form B as well.
So, Patrick, yes. Now you're muted.
You're muted, Patrick.
Sorry, there we go. All right. Thank you, Christian, very much for bringing this forward and all the work the team has done to get, including all those drive-bys. Um, you know, trying to tie the initial, uh, article, uh, that you reviewed with the increase of 15 days to 30 days, kind of back to this and kind of completely kind of create a story of how this impacts somebody who may be affected. Am I correct in thinking that once MACRIS is updated with all the properties, pre-1950, if I'm understanding you correctly, that all of those properties would somehow be flagged in the system so that somebody who's filing a building permit would automatically be flagged, hey, you are impacted or you are not. And if you are not, it doesn't go down the path through review, so therefore there's no 270-day, um, process or, or holding period or whatever that was called. I just, I want to understand what somebody can expect. You know, if we're paying money for this, is, is there going to be some automation to this so that we don't have people unduly waiting on permits? If they're not affected?
So one way to respond to this, I think, is that this database is held by the state. Um, and it's only accessible through their, through the state database. So, um, on the one hand, if someone is preparing or wants, it would require a little bit of research on their part to go check MACRIS to, if they were, maybe if they were, um, proposing to demolish a house or some structure. It would, they would have to literally go onto MACRIS's website because these things aren't, they don't exist anywhere else. The, the state owns them in this database, the Massachusetts Historical Commission. So if they go there, that will give them a sense of the kind of his, the background of their house, but it certainly will not, um, guarantee whether it is, you know, I, I don't, the short answer is it doesn't guarantee any sort of automation, I think. It can help them make an informed decision or can give them maybe a perspective as to what kind of structure they're dealing with. Um, some of these Form Bs are very short and they're, you know, they're simply to gather the information, the background, the historic, sort of anything on the house. That's, that's a kind of their main goal so that we have a tool. It's like the first tool in our toolbox of like how we start to talk about these, these structures. So, um, you know, there's a variety of uses for them. They don't, they're not any kind of, um, you know, they don't require anyone to visit their house or go inside their house. Uh, the, the interior is often not discussed, uh, at all. They're mainly an exterior thing. They're very, just a basic sort of baseline building block from which we can understand somebody's structure. It's like, you know, again, it's a tool in the toolbox. It's, it just starts to the discussion. It doesn't protect the house. It doesn't, uh, do anything like that. I mean, you know, if you're a private resident owner and you want to do research on your house, it's an excellent place to start. Often there would be bibliographic entries in there as to like where you can find more about your house. Um, they do title searches, like the, the research involves title searches. Anything online, anything in bibliographic, you know, things available online or in texts and libraries, et cetera. So it's a good, you know, it's there for informing people, making decisions, helping realtors at, you know, anybody who wants to access it. It's a, it's a public database, but it's not like tied into like the town's, you know, permitting, permit pro or anything like that. It doesn't like come up as like a, oh, this is a house that has a Form B. You would have to sort of search that on your own.
And this is purely for demolition only, not for renovation of an existing structure. Is that, is that correct?
Uh, for our purposes, that's right, the Historical Commission's purposes, but, um, we often send people, ask us questions all the time about their houses. Oh, I just bought this house on da-da-da Main Street. I'm interested. Is it historic? It has a plaque. And then we'll pull the Form B and say, yeah, it has all this information on it and we can give that to them and, or show them where it is. And, you know, sometimes it's as basic as what kind of windows should I replace? Well, here's your Form B. This is the date. This is the year. And sometimes we use it to help people make decisions like that. But there's certainly no like preservation restrictions involved with the Form B or anything like that.
And as a resident, if I, let's just say, I, I, I'm not familiar with MACRIS and I go into the building department and I want to pull a permit, my expectation kind of based on this conversation is that the building commissioner would say, um, would be the one that it would indicate to the resident, hey, your house might be in scope here, uh, and may require a Form B. Um, and that the commissioner would do that work as opposed to the resident having to do that work of locating or identifying that. Is that, is that a correct expectation?
I mean, I imagine that could happen. On our end, we basically receive the demolition permit request from the building commissioner at this point. So we're not involved in that first layer of conversation. Um, I imagine that, you know, like that first house on my title page, that's a Samuel Fay house. If somebody bought that and wanted to tear it down, um, you know, that's a 1700s house. It's sort of the Fay family. It's like a kind of a big deal. So a house like that already has a MACRIS entry in it. Um, so I would hope that the commissioner would be aware of that. Um, I mean, you know, I, I don't know. It's hard to say. Uh, he's aware of MACRIS, I believe, and I mean, I know he is, but I, I don't know how involved he gets in that sort of flagging process. That would be a conversation that we would be happy to have with him. Uh, anything that even comes in, we're happy to take a look at or have a conversation about.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Sure.
Okay, Shelby?
Christian, did the Historical Commission consider, um, seeking CPA funds as a source for this? We may not be, uh, primetime ready for it just yet, um, but at a future, uh, hopefully near-term town meeting?
Yes, we are very interested in seeking CPA funds. Um, we don't know exactly when those will be available. We've been talking about it ever since. We've been talking about it ever since, you know, um, we've been talking about it since, you know, Jen was our chair and, um, it's always been something we're very interested in looking at and they can definitely, you know, certain amount of it, this has to be flagged for historic, you know, a historic aspect. Um, so we would be interested in potentially using those funds for this, you know, more surveying, you know?
Thank you. All right, Alan.
Okay, thank you. Um, a few questions. So the Form B just gathers data about the property and it goes into the state database. You're indicating that generally you use the form data when people ask about the property, but you would also per, pull it, um, if there was a demolition permit that comes to you. Are there other potential uses of the Form B such as would you look at, but you know, the Form Bs for an entire neighborhood? As far as requesting any sort of historic district formation? Or other activity that could directly or indirectly put restrictions on the properties?
In terms of restrictions, um, I mean, the simple answer is no. I suppose if someone were trying to create a kind of a local historic district with some kind of preservation restrictions, they would naturally pull all the Form Bs of all the, you know, historic houses there and they would start with that. That's not what we're trying to do. Um, you know, even if you have a historic district, so there's different types of historic districts. We have a couple that are identified now, but they don't have any restrictions associated with them. So, um, you can, you know, paint your house purple, for example, in, in some historic districts, right? So it doesn't, there aren't these sort of restrictions and, you know, there's certain things that, you know, if, for example, the Spur House might be a unique example where the town was able to sort of sell that with a couple historic preservation restrictions tied into it to kind of limit what one could do with it. You couldn't tear it down. You can't, you know, do something totally, um, totally inappropriate with the house, I guess. I don't know. Um, I don't remember all the details of that, uh, transaction, but some, if there is a sale, if there's a kind of a legal transfer of a property, those are, those are moments where preservation restrictions could theoretically be, you know, imposed, but, um, this, the Form Bs simply provide a data sheet and help us do our job a little bit, you know, easier. Because right now, if, if someone, if anything comes in and there's no Form B for it, it's, we're having to sort of back up and start from scratch. We have to find a consultant. We have to hire that consultant. We have to, well, we have to evaluate the property ourselves. We have to try to figure out the history of the property. Sometimes it's easier and sometimes it's harder. So we're doing a lot of sort of catch up type of work, uh, when we get a request, a demo permit or even a a resident requesting information about their house. Um, you know, obviously a resident requesting information about their house, we don't hire a consultant to do Form B. We do it kind of ourselves as best that we can. But if there's a demolition, uh, permit that's pulled and we're on the spot to make a decision and we don't have a Form B, we have to go through that process as quickly as we can. That's kind of what we're sort of generating the, the need for the surveys.
And, um, as part of your plans, do you have a communication plan to let these eighty one, you know, the owners of these eighty one properties know that this is happening? And what it means and what it doesn't mean for them?
So at this time, we do not. However, um, none of the properties that are in MACRIS in Westboro, I mean, they don't require owner notification per se. They don't require a visit per se. They're almost always done through title searches and historic searches of research. It's, the consultant rarely has to visit the property. Often we'll try to make sure that the property still exists, that it, that there is the house there. Often that can even be done with Google Maps. Um, sometimes the image in MACRIS is just the Google street view. So it doesn't necessarily require, uh, any visit or notification per se. Um, you know, I guess that's the kind of short answer.
So I'm, I'm hearing that it's, there's no requirement for it. But if the commission is seeing this as, you know, not just information that could be valuable to the commission's work down the road, but could be a resource to the homeowner. I guess I would suggest that letting the homeowners know it's happening, that it's non-invasive, right? And that, you know, should they be curious to what you find, it'll be available, right? And, and make that aware.
Though we could certainly.
Like my, my underlying concern is making sure that this doesn't inadvertently trigger any issues for homeowners, right? Whether it's restrictions on, you know, what they can do with the property or, you know, I mean, I, I guess if, if the research in the Form B finds a title problem, right? I guess it's better to find it now than when they go to sell the house, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, the Form B doesn't really list, you know, it, it, it's looking, it's not like looking for like who, it doesn't deal with recent uh, transactions. It deals with like the, it would deal with, you know, for example, like the Form B, the latest Form B that we commissioned, you know, is the golf club building, right? It says eighteen seventy one. It talks about how the property, the house that was there before got moved, that's a sort of, is that became that blue house that's next door to it. Then a new house was built, who built the new house and whose farm it was and all that kind of stuff. It doesn't get it really, it, it, it gets a little bit later and kind of who owns it in general, but it doesn't say, you know, it doesn't sort of follow the whole ownership of the house. It doesn't get into that kind of really like, it's a historian preservationist who's doing the, the searches, the research. And they're just producing a kind of background to it. Um, they're not interested in like, you know, it was sold in two thousand and four for this amount of money. They don't get into any of that kind of detail at all.
I, I, I suggest that that be part of the presentation you make, if you make one to a town meeting.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
You know, lay concerns that if you do this, boom, there's going to be some historical marker on my, you know, historical tag in a database somewhere.
I know. Yeah.
I want to redo the porch. The next thing I know, I'm being told I can't, right? So.
No, there's, I agree. There's a lot of concern and fear anytime you start talking about, about these. Um, but even in Na- even if we were to, you know, I give, I give the example of, uh, even if we were to recommend a house in town for the national registry that still doesn't protect it. Uh, even if you're on the national registered database, it has to be a landmark status like, and there's major hoops that have to go through that to, to get, you know, we don't have any of those sort of, um, bylaw. We don't have any of that sort of stuff in our bylaws. It's just not, it's, it's not an issue. So I would be, I would be very clear in town meeting that this is not a, right, invasive. It's not an invasive process at all. It doesn't put any restrictions on anyone's house. It's purely for information.
Okay, thank you.
So, it's so looking at the numbers you provided in terms of the houses in the assessor's database versus what's in MACRIS. And the difference, it did look like, um, you had a lot more single family homes listed versus the assessor's database had more multifamily homes. The assumption though, is that's the same set of houses there just classified differently between the two databases.
Yes, there's quite a few old homes that have been converted into multiple family houses.
Okay, so at some point it was single family and then
Right.
in the last two to three decades.
Exactly.
Has been converted. Okay. Okay. No, I think this seems, um, pretty straightforward. Uh, any other questions? From the board? And, and we don't often get, uh, the chair of the historical commission in, in front of the board. So any other questions you have here as well, I imagine. I, I, Christian, I don't want to put you on the spot, but if, if there's anything else, um, people would like to bring up. Um, I'll put it out there. Christian, thank you for coming.
Thank you. I would just like to, if I could just say one quick thing, I would just, um, we are very interested in being more involved with, you know, every aspect of the town. We, um, you know, technically some of our, you know, involvement is limited in certain sort of capacities as, you know, based on the bylaws, but, um, we're always available here for, you know, advice, commentary, all, all those sorts of things. So I appreciate being here and, um, you know, keep us in mind if you have historical questions.
Yeah, thank you. I think Shabby has a final thought.
Yeah, just to echo that from, um, I, Ian and I had an opportunity to, uh, uh, attend the last historical commission meeting where the golf club building was being discussed. I, I felt like there was sort of good progress in, in that discussion. I know the historical commission expressed an interest in seeing the building and touring the building, which Ian addressed. And so I think that, uh, that was all for the good of the, uh, project, uh, you know, as we move forward. So appreciate, Christian, that continued collaboration, uh, you know, with the commission, working with the, the building committee, uh, as we discussed earlier in our meeting and our town manager.
Great. Thank you very much.
Christian, thank you for attending this evening. Much appreciated. And thank you for your work for the town.
Absolutely. Thank you. Have a great night.
You too. Uh, next, uh, we have amend zoning bylaw and zoning map, MBTA, community multifamily overlay district and trail easements. And I think we have a couple of people here.
Yes. Hello, uh, Jenny Gingras, the director of planning. Um, and I do have a presentation if I can share my screen.
All right. That sounds good.
Sean, this is Mark Solberg, Seven Weld Street and Chair of the Planning Board. I'm just here in case, uh, I can answer any questions, but Jenny's going to handle most of it. So thanks.
All right. Thanks, Mark.
Okay. Are you seeing the presentation up on the screen?
Yes, I see the commuter rail map.
commuter rail map. Yep.
Okay, great. It minimizes my screen, so I can't always, uh, tell. Um, okay. So I am again Jenny Gingras, the director of planning, and I'm presenting to you the MBTA zoning article, um, which is now Article thirty and is also known as the MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District. And is much easier said as the MBTA zoning article. So, uh, you all are probably familiar with what an MBTA community is, as it's been talked about quite extensively for the last couple of years. Um, but just to give a brief overview, um, the state has created a definition of an MBTA community and there are four classifications. Uh, Westboro is a commuter rail because we have a commuter rail station. Um, there's a hundred and seventy seven total MBTA communities that are subject to the new requirements of Section three A of the zoning act. And, uh, it does require that as an MBTA community, we provide for at least one district um, of reasonable size, of which multifamily housing is permitted as of right. And then the deadline to comply with the state's requirements is December, um, thirty first of this year. And we are presenting it at town meeting in March, um, because we want to leave room if any changes are needed. Um, for example, a zoning article will be subject to approval by the attorney general, which can take up to ninety days if it, you know, passes town meeting. So that December thirty first deadline is the date of which we have an approved article by the attorney general. Um, so when people hear as of right, it, it can create some fear. So I just wanted to go over what as of right zoning really means. Uh, essentially it means that a development can proceed without a special permit, variance or any other discretionary zoning approval. However, um, under this bylaw and, um, most sections of our existing bylaw, we require site plan review, which still goes through a full planning board hearing, um, where there's notice to a butters. And, uh, the planning board can put conditions on the approval. So why are we doing this? Well, um, we're a commuter rail, uh, district, so we do have to comply. But none of our existing zoning districts meet the state's new requirements, which I will go over, um, shortly. And so we had to propose new zoning districts. We do have some districts where we allow multifamily by a special permit. But again, this has to be, uh, as of right. Communities that don't comply will be ineligible for a state grant program such as the Housing Choice Community Grants, Mass Works Grants, and then Local Capital Projects Funds. And, uh, each of those, we have received, um, millions of dollars from and, and that funds. For example, uh, we have the Oda Street Corridor project that was, uh, funded partially by Mass Works Grants. Um, we have the BWALT project and then other sidewalk improvements. There's other funding decisions that could be informed as part of this, um, on whether we comply or not. And those, uh, grant programs, we've also received numerous grants from. So Mass Works, Complete Streets. So essentially if we don't comply, it would be a huge loss in terms of funding. Other non-compliant communities, if, you know, they refuse to comply, they've lost some of their housing authority funding that we get from the state. And essentially the attorney general has, uh, said that complying with this law is not optional. So the compliance process we went to, um, went through over the last couple of years, there was an action plan submitted in January twenty twenty three and it was approved. Um, so that was completed. And again, the requirement from the state level, we need to, um, have the zoning bylaw in place, approved by the attorney general, no later than December thirty first, twenty twenty four. To get there, what we did was we received a technical assistance grant from Mass Housing Partnership and RKG Associates, um, to finalize the compliance model and complete an economic feasibility analysis. The consultant, RKG, they tested the districts, looked at the zoning rules for setbacks and other dimensional requirements. And from there, we came up with, uh, the districts that I'll show you on the next screens. And then from there, we drafted the bylaw using the, uh, template from the state and then with additional input from our consultant. So our requirements, um, based on, uh, the category we're in as a commuter rail and then our number of housing units, um, this is what we needed to comply with. So there's specific unit capacity that we had to hit, uh, land area density. A lot of, uh, math and calculations essentially. So again, um, looking at it, the districts had to total at least fifty acres in size, um, with fifty percent of the total acreage uh, being contiguous land. At least twenty percent of the district acreage had to be located within half mile to the commuter rail station. And then no district could be smaller than five acres in size. So we had to really work with our consultant and, uh, you know, put together a lot of information to understand where we could place these districts and how they could comply. And so this is what we came up with. Um, there's going to be, uh, proposed three sub-districts uh, that we're calling Gleason Street, Turnpike Road A and Turnpike Road B. So the first district is, uh, uh, called Gleason Street Subdistrict and it's where, uh, Westboro Village currently is, um, right here. Um, and then there's also a, a site over here with an industrial building. Um, so that will be District One. District Two is the site of the current, uh, multifamily Park Westboro. And then District Three is, uh, where Arrive, the Arrive apartment buildings are currently located. More numbers. More numbers. So with those districts, we also had to look at the zoning, and we decided that we were comfortable with what the underlying zoning currently required, which is essentially what you see here. The only thing that's slightly different is the dwelling units per acre. But those numbers reflect the current density that is on those sites. So Gleason Street, that development's approximately 12 dwelling units per acre. Turnpike Road A, which is where Park Westboro is, that's about 14 dwelling units per acre. And then Turnpike Road B, where Arrive is, that's approximately 40 dwelling units per acre existing. And just so I'm showing you the calculations and how it all worked out, this column right here are the requirements of what we had to have as a requirement. And then based on the three different districts, it came out to this total. So that it shows that we do comply. So the anticipated impact on Westboro in terms of new development is minimal. All of these parcels have existing housing or some sort of development on them. So it's very unlikely that it would be redeveloped. And even if it was redeveloped, then there would be new requirements, such as affordable housing. And for example, in the case of Arrive, that's currently eight stories, they would be required to rebuild it at four stories. Again, very unlikely that that would happen. We are taking other initiatives to diversify our housing stock, because I want to make that clear, that we do understand the housing need in Westboro. For example, we're doing a housing production plan that will take a look at the comprehensive housing needs, and look at other housing goals and implementation. So we're doing that separately from the zoning article, and something could be coming at another Town Meeting. But I just wanted to make that that clear, that while this will not have impact on new development, we are looking at other ways to diversify the housing stock. This, the timeline, we're in open Planning Board hearing right now. So we had a hearing last week on this, and it was continued to the meeting next week on February 20th. And then we'll go to annual Town Meeting. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
All right, Jenny. Thank you very much. Ellen?
A couple of questions. In the bylaw, the way it's written, the zoning overlay is the MCMOD?
Yes.
But there's also reference to a multifamily housing overlay district?
It's the MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District.
Right. But the actual bylaw talks about MFHOD as well. What's the relationship? Are the, is the MFHOD the sub-district? It's unclear. In 3B1, it says the boundaries of the MFHOD are depicted in the zoning map. And the MFHOD is further divided into three sub-districts. So what's the relationship between the MCMOD and the MFHOD? Or is that just a typo in the acronym?
The MFHOD was the sub-districts, and the MCMOD is the overall district. But I do see that that can be confusing. So.
3B1 says that the MFHOD is further divided into three sub-districts. So it makes it sound like the MFHOD is the all three districts combined?
Yeah, I definitely see how that can be confusing. Yeah, I'll, I'll take a look at that in more detail and see if we can make that more clear.
Okay. Was, was Park Westboro built under a comprehensive permit?
Yes.
Okay, so this being an overlay district, this doesn't in any way impact the validity of the affordability restrictions that currently exist on the project?
No, it does not. Right. Yeah, that would not affect it at all. They would essentially have to rebuild and reapply under our zoning. The comprehensive permit is something that's.
Right. So I guess my problem, the problem though, is that the comprehensive permit currently requires, I believe, 25%? And this zoning, should they decide to redevelop at any point in time, would lower that to 20? We would actually, on that parcel, we'd lose potentially 5% affordable housing units.
That would be accurate. It was built under a comprehensive permit. I mean, it's highly unlikely that it would be raised and rebuilt. But that would be a small risk, I suppose.
Yeah, but zoning's forever, right?
It is, but also, I guess, sorry, one more thing about that. The deed, there are deed restrictions for that comprehensive permit, and I believe they are in perpetuity. So those units, that 25% that are affordable, they're deed restricted to be so. So I'm not sure that, I'm not honestly not sure how that would work if, you know, they were to demolish it and rebuild, given that the deeds are restricted to be affordable in perpetuity.
Yeah, Alan, I think there's two things to factor. It's a rental project, so the ZBA approved that with that percentage in perpetuity. It's not something that can be changed without going back to ZBA, and I don't know that they would allow that. But yeah, we, I understand, I guess it's feasible. They could rebuild that at 20% instead of 25?
I guess what level of redevelopment?
Yeah, it's also feasible that somebody could take down Arrive and rebuild that, and that doesn't have any affordable units in it. If that were to happen, we'd gain, you know, 20% of Arrive would be, you know, 100 units? I don't even know exactly. So, you know, there is, I think, very little, in reality, there's very, very unlikely that any of these buildings is going to be torn down and rebuilt at the exact same density that they're already built out, built out at. That park project is only, what, five years old?
True, true.
Would it be economically viable to think that somebody's going to tear that down just to gain 5% of affordable units? I don't think the income stream would support that.
So, but does this zone, would this zoning allow them to simply add a new building? On the, on any of these properties?
That would affect the existing comprehensive permit. That's how I would interpret that. They would essentially have to start over with this new zoning. If they just wanted to add an additional building, that would be considered part of the existing comprehensive permit, because that was an existing project.
Alan, the current density at Park is 14 units an acre.
No, 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 I'm.
So I can't add a building and make it 16 units an acre?
Okay, okay. I'm just.
Then you're already at the 14 units per acre. It's not like they can say, oh, well, we're gonna, you know, now we have the right to add two units an acre. Now, if it were only built out at 10 units an acre, and we zoned it for 14 units an acre, well, yes, we would be risking another building. But because it's already built out at the 14 units an acre, then they can't build it and make it more dense than it already is.
Okay. Okay. And then my only other question is, with this overlay district, redevelopment doesn't have to use the overlay district, correct?
Correct. The under, the underlying zoning would still apply. This is just a layer that would be an option for anybody to come in and use it.
So, so if the owners of Arrive decided they wanted to take one building down and do something different on that part of the property, they could elect to do it under the underlying zoning or under the overlay?
Yes. So that is in the multifamily, I'm sorry, the highway business district. So they would be required to go to the Planning Board for a special permit if they wanted to use the underlying zoning.
Okay.
Just in addition to that, Alan, I don't believe either the underlying zoning, and I know this overlay zone would not allow them to build another eight-story building. I think the max is four stories, even in highway business, which is the underlying zone.
Okay.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Cool. So yeah, so my only comment would be just clarify the definition of MFHOD? And that 3B1?
Great, thank you.
I don't see any other questions. I have a quick one. So for Arrive, the density is, is it 40 units per acre is allowed? And that's what they're at currently, at eight stories. So if they're only allowed, if they were to redevelop, they're only allowed to go to four stories, I guess, would it even be feasible for them to try and put 48, 40 units per acre?
Yeah, most likely, most likely not, because there's other things in play, such as the setback requirements, and then the open space requirement still applies. So.
Can you go back to that screen that shows the potential yield?
Sure.
So when you look at, I'm sorry, that, I don't think it's this one, the potential yield one that shows our, our total capacity of, I think, yeah. So Turnpike Road B, which is Arrive, has a capacity of 599 units. There's more than that currently at Arrive. So no, they wouldn't be able to build it as tall, but they would probably be able to cover more of the lot than they currently do.
Okay. Yes, yes. I think my concern was more that we were putting forth an allowance that if somebody were to redevelop, they couldn't actually, you know, reasonably utilize. And it looks like that may still be the case. All right. I wasn't sure if that would cause an issue with then it getting approved. Thank you, Patrick.
I'll let Alan go first.
Okay, yeah. So I appreciate this. I guess my, my questions really weren't around, you know, rapid increase of density and construction. It's really more about, you know, making sure that any redevelopment would at least preserve the level of affordable housing percentages in those districts. I do have one more general question than that. You know, the master plan talks about increased housing density in the downtown district, you know, in and around the Rotary and the Business District there. I assume that the committee looked at potentially including areas in the downtown district as part of the MBTA zoning, but decided that higher-density housing in that should long-term be by special permit rather than as, you know, by right.
Yeah, we.
So it's not that we don't, that we're saying we don't want that type of housing in the downtown district anymore. It's saying that if we're going to have it, we want to have more control of what it looks like, how it's built, where it's located.
Well, not necessarily. I think part of it, maybe, we did look at the downtown, but there's a lot of calculations that had to go into it. For example, the percentage that has to be located near the commuter rail, and then just contiguous acreage of a certain size. And we are doing the downtown development plan, which was also part of the consideration. And we really wanted to wait to see what that showed, and what that told us in regards to the, the housing need assessment in the downtown area. And take a look at the zoning in that way.
Okay, thanks. That makes sense.
Just, just to add to that, the downtown planning overlay district gives the Planning Board tremendous flexibility in approving housing downtown. So it's not a zoning issue downtown, although it is special permit as opposed to by right. It's more, I think, a question of the sewer capacity. And, you know, I agree with Jenny that we wanted to study, we wanted to complete that downtown study before we changed any zoning, because we thought it would should be a comprehensive approach that addressed traffic, density, zoning, a lot of factors downtown.
Yeah, I mean, I, no, I get that. I appreciate that. And I sort of wanted, the reason I asked the questions, I want to bring that out as part of the discussion. I expect there will be people in town who will be, who will look and say, well, you haven't really created any zones that would allow any new, net new development. That doesn't really follow the spirit of the law, although it follows the requirements.
Response to that, Alan.
The letter of the laws. And given, you know, I'm sure folks are aware of the vote that's happening, that's supposed to happen today, it's happening tomorrow in Milton, and regarding zoning that they approve, that their charter allows an election-style vote to override a vote of Town Meeting, Holden's statements about their intent to not comply, that the intent here isn't to comply, and is not to continue to create more affordable housing and more housing that's affordable to the broader community. It's part of, it fits within, what's been proposed fits within the town's strategy, within our existing zoning, within the planning and analysis efforts that are underway for future development.
Alan, can I just, I completely understand somebody who might criticize this as, you know, not actually creating zoning. But people need to understand that the town of Westboro was way ahead of the currents. I mean, we passed the transit-oriented village zoning in, I think, 2002, and we've, we've created units with that within a half a mile of the T Station. And oh, by the way, it allows for 14 units an acre. So it just so happens, that's what the state is using as their number. So it makes me wonder if they even looked at what we did and said, geez, this is a good model. But we also have passed 20% affordability requirements in all of our residential zones. So we're, we're requiring pretty stringent and affordable housing requirements in every new residential project. And then on top of that, this town has put millions of dollars into the Affordable Housing Trust.
Absolutely. I'm supportive, I'm supportive of this.
I don't think Westboro is not doing their share. I.
No, no.
Plenty of very flexible zoning. The highway business allows multifamilies. The downtown planning overlay allows multifamily. But I just don't think that the town should, you know, look at by right zoning as, as the only option. I think special permit is, is valuable in many locations.
No, no, I agree. I'm supportive of this and the, and the direction it's taking, given the other zoning, the other, and the other planning efforts that are involved in the town's longstanding commitment. And even the inclusionary zoning rules. So I know it is a concern of people in the community. And so I just wanted to, you know, bring that issue forward, so that people understand that, you know, we're not saying we don't want additional affordable housing or don't want, we're, we're not backing away from the master plan. But there are other ways, we're using other means to manage the goals of the master plan, which is good.
Right. And I'll just say that I'm really looking forward to seeing the housing production plan, because I think that's a really important piece of this, and understanding what we need for affordable housing. And it will provide that framework for the next five to 10 years of what we need, and that will help drive what we will add in for zoning. So we're definitely working on, working on different initiatives through the housing production plan, and then other discussions in the, in the planning department about what's in our current zoning bylaw, because there's, there's definitely a housing need in Westboro, even though we're over our 10% SHI. And, and we have to look out for that and make sure that we're, you know, looking into the future for those needs.
Yep. Thank you for all the information. And thank you to the committee for a lot of hard, complicated, and good work.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Patrick. Thanks, Patrick.
Uh, yeah, I was as the liaison member from the select board on to the MBTA Communities Act team. A lot of questions that were raised tonight, I think pretty much every one of the questions that were raised tonight were ones. That the team looked at and tried to understand better and be prepared for. And I really want to say thank you to Jenny and Mark and the entire team. Christie was involved. So were several of the department heads in in working on this and it took some time to, first of all, understand what the state was asking of us. Understanding that the state is has an over two hundred thousand home residential home dwelling shortfall. So this is really important to the entire state. I'm very supportive of it, but I just want to do again. Say thank you to the entire team for working on it. It's a very complex topic that we're going to bring in front of town. And I think they've done a great job. Bringing this in a particular way that will make it easily understood and I'm hopeful supported by the community. As it will result in some fairly negative impacts if if the community does not adopt this.
Thank you.
Thanks, Patrick. I just have sort of one other question, I think, on this before we go to the other article. So based on what you're proposing here, it looks like. We are going well beyond or fairly far beyond what is required of us. I guess, is that accurate? And and I guess, what was the thought process?
Well, a couple of things on it. The math was hard to. It was hard to get exactly twelve hundred and fifty units, right? Like you, you had to add existing lots. So we couldn't add. We couldn't chop up a lot and say, we're only going to add twenty of this, you know. We're only going to add four of the five acres of this lots in order to make this work, right? We could have probably reduced the density a little bit in one of the zones. So that forty could have been thirty eight and that would have kept us at twelve fifty. You know, the math gets really complex when we start messing with it. Secondly. As the housing stock grows, I don't want the state to turn around and say, well, you were at two fifty, but now you really need to be. You were at twelve fifty required and now you need to be at thirteen hundred. And we only had zone for twelve sixty, right? This gives us leeway in case. Our housing numbers go up. We still meet the percentage that they require. Because you have to remember that twelve hundred and fifty units was based upon twenty percent of our current housing stock, which is eighty three hundred. Units. So if it goes up to eighty five hundred or, you know, nine thousand, we'll still be in compliance because we went over the twelve fifty.
Thank you. Very much. Any other questions on this article before we go to Article twenty three? All right.
Okay, I can share my screen to just show the. The BWALT Trail easements article. Okay. So as the board knows, we've been working on the.
Jenny, can we get a little bigger for?
Oh, sure.
Viewers, thank you so much. Well, and honestly, and me too. Thank you.
Is that good? Yep, okay. So. Part of part of what the planning board and the planning department looks at when we get site plan reviews or special permit applications. Is if the parcel is part of where the BWALT trail system. Goes through or is proposed to go through as part of the study that was done. And so as a result of that, these five properties. All had an impact from the BWALT Trail Eastman. So the planning board added a condition. Which was agreed to by the applicants that the town receive an easement. For the purposes of the BWALT that would go through. That portion of the property. So. These are the five parcels. Fifty four Otis and sixty and sixty four Otis are the Amazon property. Sixty six Otis is Cold Harbor Brewing. One eighty and one eighty two Turnpike is the proposed Hyundai dealership. And then two oh eight Turnpike is an existing. Commercial business for Penta. And so essentially, we're seeking town meeting to authorize the select board to obtain these easements on behalf of the town. Any questions?
There you go.
Yeah, Jenny, I think you said this, but just just to be clear, these are ones that have already been agreed to. By the. Property owners.
Yes, they have, and it's a part of a planning board decision condition. So essentially. You know, they can build whatever they're building, the planning board agrees to it as long as part of it is to provide this easement to the town.
Okay, and I'm assuming with that, even I mean, I know this, this, why I'm asking this is this always comes up in town meeting with the language. Which I know is required for us to put in there, but. Am I right to assume that there is no? Because it's through the planning board that there's no, that we're not trying to buy these. Easements, or is that not true?
Correct, we're not trying to buy the easements. The easements will be part of the future BWALT trail, so it'd still be considered the property of. You know, whoever the property owner is, but the the town will have a permanent easement to utilize it as a multi-use trail.
Perfect. I think that answers it. I mean, just, we always get especially eminent domain, town meeting will come up and. They they think the town's trying to do so, but I think you asked my question is it really is, that's the language you've been there, but we're going to acquire it. In essence, for. Because of the agreement. That's been reached with the property owners as part of the planning board process.
Yes, good to know that will be a question. Thank you.
Oh, it will be, it will be. Well, thanks.
You're welcome.
Questions from any other board members? All right, we're good on this one. Jenny, thank you very much for joining us tonight.
Yes, thanks for having me.
Mark, thank you. Good to see you.
Thank you. Good to see you all. Take care.
Next, we have the Affordable Housing Trust Transfer of Property at Forty Five High Street and Home Rule Petition.
So thank you. So Ed Bain unfortunately is feeling under the weather. So he asked me if I would handle the presentation. Sort of last minute. We weren't able to secure another member, another trustee to join me. So let me share my screen and I'll dive right in. Okay, so. Shelby asked me to point out that, yes, this is our new logo. This was developed by students, seniors last year. Westboro High School and the Advanced Placement Design classes. With guidance from the faculty there who also assisted in the project. So thank them very much and great collaboration there. We have two warrant articles. You know, articles on the warrant. Article nineteen regards the transfer of High Street Extension. I won't actually read through the entire. Content of the article here tonight. It's on the screen. It's in the warrant. But effectively, we're looking for town meeting to authorize the select board to transfer Forty Five High Street Extension to the Housing Trust. For the potential development of affordable and moderate income housing. With conditions that would allow the select board, if they choose to rescind that transfer. Within certain parameters in the future. Is a refresher. On the rights, the GIS map. Forty Five High Street is the highlighted yellow property. It's currently wooded. It's hard to tell from this photograph, but there's a giant pit in the middle of the property. The towns own the property since nineteen thirty nine. And we're not sure, we believe it was used as a gravel pit either before or after the town came into possession of the property. And we're not sure of the circumstances. The red hash lines that come into the property at the north end. Are active and defined wetlands and areas of concern as well. So any use of the property would have to accommodate that. And you can see just for positioning, High Street Extension is the road that makes the hook to the left. And then behind the property over on the right hand side are the townhomes on Mayberry Drive. As a refresher, the select board previously granted the housing, the Affordable Housing Trust permission to do. Investigation to determine the potential developability of the site. And we worked with Waterman Design Associates who did some field assessments. We did work with our conservation agent and conservation experts at Waterman Design as well around the conservation component. And we came up with two potential concepts that would be four cottage style homes. Operating on a shared septic system, we would need to replace the wetlands and provide off street parking. So concept two, which is the one that's preferred by the trust. Because it provides a lot of green space in the middle of the property where we would fill in the the depression. Parking you can see is perpendicular to the street, a total of ten spaces, two batches of five. And the septic system is under the grassy area in the center. That path that goes up. The center of the property is wide enough. For the tower ladder to go up. So it can reach the back units of the house. It would actually, if we went with this design, would have to be made six feet wider to accommodate the outriggers for stability. And so feedback we got from the one stop, the Business One Stop, that we did an initial design review. Is that the fire department's concerned that it'd be very difficult to back an ambulance in or out of that straight path. And there is some concern from the planning department that generally frowns on perpendicular parking off street. Even though the street is very low traffic. And typically zoning restricts that off street parallel parking to twelve units and we only have ten. It's still a preference not to do that. So with Waterman Design, we have a second concept. This one, the feedback, the the all the team members at the Business One Stop prefer it. It's a better off street parking scenario and provides better access for emergency vehicles, not only for the tower truck. But an ambulance could pull in frontwise and have room to turn around. And exit the property. And it also creates an area that could be used for common dumpster. You'll notice that in the upper left corner of the property. There's some hand drawn hash marks that would be wetland compensation where we would recreate the wetlands we're filling in the separate, in the center of the property. And that's actually available in both in both drawings. So at this point, we feel that. There are feasible, there's a feasible design that can work. This, we haven't met with the planning board yet to see or really got a determination whether this fits within. The senior overlay zoning. As far as density goes. So we're expecting that this would go through the zoning board of appeals as a friendly forty B. Should I keep going or do you want to ask your question now, Patrick?
I'll totally announce.
Okay. So. Development of this property is in strategic alignment with the housing goals in the master plan, both for affordable housing. As well as some increased density housing. Affordable, moderate income housing in the downtown is, you know, district and it's within. The the business, the downtown planning overlay district and the senior living overlay. It also, we're looking at a mix of these units being age restricted as well. To help address the needs identified in the townwide senior needs assessment. And these could be used for affordable workforce housing as well as downsizing options for seniors who are looking to move down from a larger property. But stay in town. The trust has not decided whether these would be built as rental units or as ownership units. Part of that will depend on the housing production plan. And the data we get from there, as well as the potential financing options we explore. The the reason we're looking for this transfer now. Is that in order to start looking at funding sources and in order to really go through. The planning and the permitting process and in doing further engineering work, we really should have control of the property. And actually be developable. In fact, we cannot go for approval. Or seek state or federal funds to help do this development unless we have control of the property. And so this approval would allow the select board to give the trust legal standing. To start meeting formally with the planning board, the Conservation Commission. As necessary, the zoning board of appeals as well and other boards and committees that would be involved in the project. The way the article is worded is the select board can regain control of the property. By creating a time period in which we need to obtain permits. And if we don't obtain permits within that time period, could recall the property. Or if prior to having final permits. The the select board identifies a different municipal or public use and wants the property back, you could recall it. The. Article is also worded that any cost of transferring either to the trust or from the trust back to the town would be the responsibility of the trust. So it would have no impact on taxpayers on the budget. Okay, any, any questions?
Alan, Patrick.
Yeah, so Alan, thank you very much for doing the work on this with the team. Love the new logo. And super excited about this as a potential project to solve some of our housing needs as we just heard in the previous presentation. My question to you is. Seeing that there's wetlands on the property, I'm just curious as to whether or not. There's any potential, is this part of a flood zone? And if so, has the impact of FEMA insurance requirements for flood insurance been assessed on the property?
It's, it is not part of a flood zone. So that's not a concern. And the the size of the wetlands is under the square footage requirement. That would prevent us from relocating them. And so the part of the development plan and what needs to be explored with the Conservation Commission. Is exactly what they would require for. Wetlands. Replacement. The wetlands that are currently on the property, really, it's also the center of the property inside the pits. Which are disconnected from the other wetlands. So it's actually advantageous for wetlands to be continuous. So we would effectively relocate the wetlands that are at the bottom of the gravel pit. To the edge of the existing wetlands and extend the existing wetlands, which will actually improve the ecosystem. As well as usability of the property.
Yeah, it makes a lot of sense. And I'll say that I do like that second design. I think it makes a lot of sense for all the reasons that you outlined. So again, thank you for the team and creativity on on that design.
Any other questions? Okay, then I'll move on to Article twenty five. Okay, this one's wonky. This is gets into the details of. Municipal and governmental procurement and the impact it can have on projects. So in addition to Forty Five High Street, as the select board is aware, the Housing Trust. As part of the personal bankruptcy proceeding was able to bid on and win the property at Six Beach Street. And we're currently looking at redevelopment alternatives for that property as well. And have gone through the Business One Stop there and we have concepts. As we look forward, whether we treat these two properties as two projects or combine them into one project, split over two locations. One of the big questions that comes into play is how do we finance it? And how do we structure the development? And so this article is asking town meeting to authorize the select board to submit a home rule petition. To the general legislature that will waive certain aspects of Mass General Law, Chapter one forty nine. Which is generally known as prevailing wage. Now, we're actually not being asked to, asking for exemption of prevailing wage or the preferences that are in Section one forty nine. It's specifically around. Aspects of the procurement process. And the requirement that subcontractors prebid and file bids prior to the general contractor preparing their bid. And I'll get into that. It's a little bit of background. The trust. The trust has three options for development of properties. One is we directly contract and, and build. This is, would look like typical municipal construction with a, you know, we hire a, you know, a project office, an independent project management officer, you know, who prepares and we issue the bid documents and we do the evaluation and come back. The other more common way to do it is to transfer the property. This is what we're doing with Three Baylor Avenue, transferring the property to a nonprofit or for-profit developer tied to a land use agreement that gets the property developed as we want. And the third option is to create what's known as a redevelopment company, corporation. These are limited liability corporations that are created specifically for a project that the Housing Trust has controlling interest in, but can take in other investments and other sort of funding. By waiving these, by getting an exemption for these bidding requirements, whether it's one project or two, the projects become eligible for the low income tax credit financing available to private developers, whether it's through redevelopment corporation or a transfer of the property. Those credits are nine percent at the federal level and four percent at the state level, which can result in savings on the project cost by 12 to 13%. And part of the qualification for that low income tax credit financing is the project must be competitive with private development. And so by providing these exemptions, this exemption isn't general, it covers specifically the property, any projects we do at 45 High Street Extension and/or Six Beach Street. It will simplify the procurement process and it reduces the need for filed subcontractor bids. The effect is lowering the cost of the project without adjusting prevailing wage or other preferences in the law. And we're looking to do this now because the home rule petition process can take six to 12 months, you know, to move, you know, from Town Meeting to the Select Board, to the request by our legislatures and through that process. And so this would, you know, having it going through the process will help us timing wise, match the financing and the potential permitting and could reduce the total project development time by up to a year. It also prepares these projects for possible funding via the Affordable Homes Act, which is the housing bond bill currently being discussed and negotiated in the legislature. And so this is a bit of a procedural request that could lower the cost of the project, let it move faster and give us more financing flexibility. Shelby?
Yeah, thank you so much, Alan, for this presentation and for making something pretty wonky understandable. So thank you. Question, is it possible to do this home rule petition for any and all work that the trust would do? Or do you have to do it sort of project by project? And there's probably reasons if the latter is the requirement.
So the precedent with other requests, this, these exemptions are commonly used by housing authorities for the development or redevelopment of public housing, where they're either contracting directly or creating a redevelopment corporation or the municipality is part of the community development corporation. The most recent being Acton, who's building 40 plus townhome or single family cottage style property, you know, affordable units on some town owned property there. There's no precedent to do a blanket one that says anything the trust does works this way, which is why we're sort of following the example. Trustees, we have, the trust has had informal conversations with our legislators about modifying these exemptions for housing authorities and municipal affordable housing trusts, generally in state law, so that every project doesn't have to go through this process in the future. But that's a long-term solution.
Sure.
We're, we're looking to increase our ability to identify what, if and what we can build on these properties, what financing and subsidies and other contributions we can get from the state and from the federal government, so that we can move forward more quickly and at a lower cost.
Well, the bigger, broader blanket, I'm very supportive of this, but the bigger, broader approach to this seems to be one that aligns with the state's initiatives, but I guess that's conversation for another day.
Yeah, yeah. Just keep, keep in mind that the state hasn't modified affordable housing rules in a significant way in more than 55 years. So it moves slowly.
Ian.
Yeah, I think you just answered this, but just, just to be clear, this is not us or you creating something that hasn't been agreed to before under a home rule petition? Is that accurate?
That's correct. The, the, our, our wording actually matches the wording from the Acton warrant article that has successfully made it through the legislature. So this is, it's, it's not done often because there hasn't been that much affordable housing redevelopment by public agencies lately. But as that's happening, this is getting used more and more. So it's, we're not setting a precedent here. We're following a precedent. And we expect it to go through smoothly. The, the area in, in the past where these types of exemptions have run into opposition is in also exempting prevailing wage and preference rules, which we're not doing. It does, our request doesn't include that. It's strictly simplifying the bid process for the trust and for the general contractor with what they're required to do. So to give an example, under Chapter 149, the developer comes in and they need an elect, they're going to need an electrician on these projects. They have to go to open bid, get at least three, you know, issue an RFP, get three formal bids from electricians. With the exemption, the contractor can come to us and say, hey, I've done 20 projects in the last 15 years and I use these three electric, electricians. They're all capable. I will contract with one of them to do the work, right? And they've provided estimates that I built into my bid. And so not having the GC go through that formal sub-bidding process saves time, money, legal costs and lowers the price of the project. And again, those pre-bid requirements run counter to the rules of the federal and state tax credits.
Thank you.
Right. Alan, thank you very much. Both of these articles look very worthy.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. I hope Ed feels better. Also say thank you to Ed for all he does for this town. He helped my father-in-law with his taxes the other day.
Yes. He does a lot of that volunteering. It's pretty, in West Berlin and other communities, it's pretty wonderful.
And with that, we will go to the acceptance of Master in Law, Chapter 59, Section 5K, Senior Tax Work Off Amendment with our interim finance director.
Hello, John Steinberg, interim finance director and chief assessor. How are you? Still here? So this is the senior work off program. It's the senior veteran work off program. But the veteran is 5N and all the exemptions are Mass General Law, this refers to Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5K and N. So the recent legislation allowed for a change to 5K but did not include 5N. So this just applies to the seniors within the work off program of which there are 50 slots. To give you a little history, the town has always elected to give as much as they can for this program. It started off at 125 hours at minimum wage up to $1,000. And then when minimum wage started to change, the town voted to adopt a local option that maintained the 125 hours, but allowed it to go above the $1,000. Whereas communities that didn't take the 125 hours just had to lower the number of hours to say below the $1,000. And at one point with the Municipal Modernization Act, they changed that $1,000 to $1,500, at which point in time the town adopted the $1,500 so that we could continue to get people as much as they can. Unfortunately, the math. The law also says that you cannot compensate them more than minimum wage and you can't compensate them less than minimum wage because minimum wage is minimum wage. And so it didn't round out quite to $1,500 and that's the situation we're in now. Once minimum wage started to exceed what would be $1,500, we brought forward and the town adopted to go back to the 125 hours. So the current amount available is 1,875 if they do the full 125 hours. With the recent legislation, they allow for that to go up to $2,000. So what I bring forth here today would be to withdraw that acceptance of the local option that would tie our senior tax work off to the 125 hours and allow for up to $2,000 at minimum wage, which calculates out to 133 hours, like 20 minutes and 13 seconds. So at 133 hours, they would go to 1,995.
Excellent. You know, John, thank you very much. Any questions regarding this article? Patrick?
Yeah. First of all, John, thank you very much for bringing this forward. It's super important that we understand this. I have no real questions. I just want to apologize to the board of the town. I actually have to drop off the call. I'll look forward to watching the rest of the meeting on Westboro TV. So thank you all. Take care.
Thanks, Patrick. All right. Any other questions for John? Pretty straightforward.
Thank you.
Sorry for making you wait this long, John.
Much appreciated. Have a good night.
I finished my ice cream. I thought maybe I'd be able to eat ice cream on TV.
Thanks again. Have a good night. With that, I've checked off everything correctly. We are now to the town manager's report.
Uh, no, we still have the, sorry, the, we had added that certification.
Oh, yes, I'm still looking at my agenda.
Before we do that, I just want to, I just want to confirm in terms of what the board is expecting for future meetings. So sorry, I'm just trying to pull up the packet here. So in your packet, I did provide you with a list of, with all the warrant articles. And when you've had your presentations or when I expected to, and I just wanted to say, so the grade out articles in your packet, which are some of the sort of regular recurring articles are ones that the board has already discussed, like the legal expenses and the finance department. I've graded those out, thinking that the board might not need a specific presentation on those items. And we certainly will talk through them when you choose whether or not to vote on them. And then the, everything else has been presented to you with the exception of Article 12E, which is the library building repair, the fire department course, which is, which was the one that we pulled out of the budget, municipal decarbonization study. And then the ACAB, Establishment of a Stabilization Fund. And then there are several new petition articles that I've not yet presented to you. So those ones I mentioned by name are planned for the 27th meeting. And then we were looking to schedule a separate meeting to handle all petition warrant articles with the AFC. And just wanting to confirm that March 4th would work. So looking for feedback on which presentations you are looking for, if you're comfortable with what I just proposed, if March 4th will work for you for petitions.
Yep. I throw those out to the board. Any thoughts or questions?
I'm at a conference, March 4th, but I can join remotely.
So March 4th works for me. I think I indicated that. Now, Chrissy, I think would be the time to kind of ask about any others that we would want to hear from again. Is that correct?
Uh, yes.
Or additional information, I should say. Okay. Do you want to hear from the board on March 4th first?
Yeah. So I think, I think most of you have responded, but I know we're still waiting for confirmation. So I just want to, I got asked by the chair today of the AFC, so I just want to confirm with them. If not March 4th, they were looking at February 29th.
I think March 4th works for me.
Hey, March 4th, I mean, it's still up in the air. I'm traveling that day. I just have to get back from DC. I think I just haven't booked flights yet. But my meetings are over mid-afternoon, so I think I can make it back in time.
Okay.
Well, let me ask if, if we want to also have folks look at the 29th on their calendar. That's the prior Thursday?
It's a Thursday.
Yeah, that one absolutely does not work for me.
Oh, okay. That makes it easier.
So we'll stick with March 4th.
I have a leap year birthday party in my family, so.
Only once every four years, right?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, so we'll stick with March 4th and then we have 10 petition warrant articles on the latest version of the warrant, plus we received two more yesterday. So a total of 12, well, as far to date, unless we receive additional ones. So just as a reminder for the public, I think the all petition warrant articles are required to go on to the warrant exactly as drafted in the petition. And the board is required to keep them on the warrant for Town Meeting. However, you have the ability, the board and the AFC have the ability to vote your level of support. So. Yeah. And so now if there's anything else that you want to see, and I guess I also wanted feedback on how the latest draft of the warrant was developed with those two capital planning articles, which is different from what we've done in the past.
Yeah, I, I have to say personally, I, I like that, that that we sort of have it broken down into those two buckets, sort of cash articles and borrow articles. I, I think that because in a way that is sort of how we look, you know, how we differentiate a lot of times between what's in front of us at Town Meeting. So no, I appreciate that, but that also recognizing that all these articles, well, two articles with many sub articles were all, you know, indicating they were all considered by the Capital Planning Committee, I think is important. Any other thoughts?
On the, the, the organization of the articles, one of the items I, I think, well, I'm generally supportive of the lieutenant and corporal positions that have been proposed by the fire department and fire chief, excuse me, and police chief. I left the budget summit sort of asking myself some questions and then it was asked of me kind of by members of the community to sort of gain a better understanding of how this proposal really works in actuality. And, and so for me, it was a matter of understanding sort of, really it's about kind of how is, how is time off scheduled? You know, how do the, how do the shifts work? To me, there's an opportunity, I think, for our fire and police chiefs to come back before us and provide a bit more detail. I certainly understand the supervisory piece. I think they've made that abundantly clear in a number of different sessions, but I think it would be helpful to get some additional information as to how these positions are going to impact, in particular, it seems the, the overtime piece on the police side. We heard that less so on, from our fire chief. So I'm wondering if the board would be inclined to hear a little bit more from our, those two members of the team. And if John, I can have a one-to-one discussion, but I do think I'm not just asking for myself, but for the public as well.
I'm fine with that. I mean, if you're hearing it from folks, it gives them an opportunity to get the story out before Town Meeting as well. So I don't have an issue with, with that.
Seems reasonable. And, and if, if I have it correctly, I mean, we're also closing, we're looking to close. we're looking to close the warrant at our next meeting.
Right.
Correct? So, so sort of anything we want to have come before us, that's.
Um, yeah, I mean, you really have one more meeting after that before town meeting. So you wouldn't be able to change any of the warrant articles after the twenty-seventh. But at that March twelfth meeting, you could still vote your support. And you could still have discussion, presentation. If there was, if there's something that you're considering taking off of the warrant or adding to the warrant, then you would want to have that discussion on the twenty-seventh. But the, the items that Shelby just brought up, for example, could, we can bring them on the twenty-seventh, but that could also be discussed on the twelfth because it wouldn't have an impact on the warrant being closed.
And, and I guess that leads to, to another question. I don't think we, does the committee, the board, pardon me, usually meet on election day? I guess, technically, by the end of the meeting, two of us could no longer be on the board.
We have met on election day before.
We can meet early.
Well, I, I thought you're, I thought you're still in office until you're, the person elected takes the oath.
Well, I, I think rather than have that conversation, if, if you all want to propose a different date or if we want to, I can send out an email and just see if we want to meet on a different day, if, if, um, if you don't want to meet on election day.
Earlier this meeting, we did schedule a public hearing.
We did.
That's true. Well, I, I'll figure it out. We can figure it out.
I, I guess we could keep the agenda short. Finishes before polls close, maybe.
I like that. Can you guarantee it?
Christie, one other item that's, it's within the budget, so it's not a specific article, is the timing on, on the board's, um, on the, um, waste management proposal.
Yeah, so you and I are gonna present that on the twenty-seventh.
Okay, all right. I just, I, I didn't see it called out anywhere specifically. I just wanted to make sure that Cooney hears that and, okay.
Yep, yep, so that's.
I can't wait.
And pardon me, the twenty-seventh, because it then directly goes into a potential update to the budget?
Yeah, so the way that the budget article is written, the numbers can still change because the, the motion would, is, it, it's not the motion, it just says it, it's for amounts for the budget. So if you read that article, it's actually very general. But we, we want, I mean, it's, we're getting late anyway, so we really want to give the community that full month to consider what we're proposing. We just didn't, based on several different factors, didn't have it ready for this meeting. Okay.
Um, I, I just had one thing. I'll, I'll throw it out there, but I mean, it, it doesn't save much time, but the course, which is the new, how we move those to an article now from budget. I believe we already talked, we talked about those at budget summit personally. I don't need to see
Okay.
A presentation of, but I don't, if the board wants it, that's fine, but I think that was just really a, a transfer. We've talked about it. It was in the budget. We just move it now to an article. So my, from, for me personally, I could say we, we don't need to see that one, but I'll leave it to what others think.
Yeah.
And I would mention one other and get folks' thoughts. Um, so Article twenty-nine, which is Article thirty-two, non-zoning wetlands protection, I think that one was the comprehensive changes that the, um, conservation director is proposing, or I think sort of a rewrite of that.
Yeah, she presented that at the budget summit.
Yeah, but I don't know how much of the community saw the budget summit. Like, I don't know if there's a chance to educate folks, but I mean, I guess it's gonna be just a, a long discussion at town meeting, I would imagine on that.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
It's up to you. If you want to have her back before you vote on your support or not, that's up to you.
I, I don't need it for the twenty-seventh, um, maybe potentially just prior to town meeting. And we, and we can talk about the next meeting as well, because I, I don't need it prior to us closing the warrant. It was more, is there another opportunity to educate folks on that? Because I don't, I don't know how many folks watched the full day budget summit. I'll think about that for next time. Um, any other questions from folks, anything? All right. Christie, back to you.
Yeah, um, so I sent you earlier the, um, certification documents. This is something that is required of us by bond counsel, um, just to, to certify the intended use of the community center. So I put a letter in your packet, um, with the intended use being for senior center and other municipal purposes. Um, we spoke to the rec center, we spoke to the, the building and having the gym and basketball court, swimming pool, um, and, um, and sort of where we're at in the process. So as long as the board is comfortable with this as presented, I would ask that you authorize Sean to sign it so that we can get it over to bond counsel.
Christie, I, I apologize. I'm not seeing that in the packet. Was that sent in an email?
It was sent in an email, yes. Yeah.
Okay, I.
I think eleven twenty-five this morning.
Okay, thank you. If you can just give me one moment to look at that, I apologize. I did not see that. I was wondering what the agenda was like.
What's that?
I said, I was wondering what the item was about.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so we just have to, you just, we have to certify that it's for municipal uses and not that you're not going to sell it so that it's qualified for municipal bonds.
I understand, okay.
But take a minute to read it, definitely.
I appreciate that. Uh, my only question, Christie, is the last sentence where it says, does not currently anticipate selling or leasing property, which is I'm fine with, or providing it for use by any private or third party.
Yeah.
I know we've kind of talked about, you know, if we had some sort of, you know, bistro.
Yeah, I'll just speak to it because I think I know exactly where you're headed. We've talked about potentially, um, contracting with a third party for, um, management of the pool. Um, we've also talked a little bit about potential around like a cafe and we don't know what that would look like. So that's, so we actually talked with, um, and John's on the call still. We, we spoke with them, with bond counsel. We explained exactly what we were considering, um, and they actually had, um, recommended that last sentence because there, the types of leases that we were describing or the types of agreements that we were describing can fully fall within the use of municipal bonds, assuming that they have certain terms, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'm fine with it then. Thank you.
And I'm fine with it.
Alan, how about you?
I'm, I'm good with it and I would move to authorize the chair to execute the community center certification as presented.
Second.
Second. Thank you very much. Uh, roll call vote. Uh, Ian.
Watson, yes.
Shelby.
Uh, Marshall, yes.
Alan.
Edinburgh, yes.
And Kio, yes. Uh, four to zero. Um, I'll try and get down tomorrow. Thank you, Christie. And with that, I think now we're at the town manager's report.
Oh, yeah. Sorry. Um, so the January twenty-four and play excellence award winner was Captain Craig Rossi of the Westboro Fire Department. On February twenty-seventh, the select boards meeting will be held at the great hall due to early in-person voting in memorial hall. Related to the Harvey building, we're working to finalize the request for qualifications or RFQ for an owner's project manager, OPM for the regional emergency communication center. So we're working, um, with folks on our side as well as folks in Grafton. Um, we also sent a letter out today to the two organizations who currently are licensed to use the Harvey building to offer assistance in planning for transition. Um, related to the community center, we're finalizing the request for qualifications. Um, for the community center, the selected veteran will assist in the public engagement process, schematic design, and the development of construction costs. Under the Board of Health, February is American Health Month, a time when all people, especially women, are encouraged to focus on their cardiovascular health. The Health Department, um, has been approached by Needham to pilot a certificate of merit program for their restaurants. Um, and then the Health Department also continues to offer COVID-nineteen test kits. In the DPW, the DPW presented the concept for East Main Street road, bike, and pedestrian improvements to CMR, oh, sorry, CMMPO for consideration to be added to the twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-nine transportation improvement or tip program. That decision will be in the next several months. Limits of work are from Hastings Elementary School to Tom Newton Drive. The Otis Street Corridor project, um, update, the DPW is working with Mastod to address the twenty-five percent design comments. Once resolved, they'll work to begin to develop the hundred percent design and secure easements. Um, that was part of what we talked about today. Um, designs expected to be completed at the end of twenty-twenty-four. The DPW and Conservation Department hosted a meeting with representatives from MBTA, Keolis, the contract railroad operator, and the Division of Ecological Restoration to discuss dysfunctional culverts under the railroad through Cedar Swamp. The next significant step is to get the culverts prioritized at the MBTA for replacement. The group is optimistic about the possibility of initiating a project in the next year, but acknowledged that the select board and our state rep assistance may be necessary to address prioritization. In the fire department, they've received a grant from the Commonwealth, um, Division of Fire Services for eighteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars for the purpose of purchasing safety equipment. Um, the department has recently completed training that was mandated by DPH to support EMS treatment and transport of police canines. Uh, the Westboro firefighter Alec Miller graduated from the Fire Academy on February second. He graduated first in his class and was awarded the Richard N. Bangs Award for outstanding academic and practical performance. And the Police Department will be holding a promotional process at the end of the month to fill two vacant lieutenant positions and two sergeant positions. The Chief Selected Law Enforcement Dimension is a highly respected law enforcement training and assessment company to help with that process. And the chief anticipates announcing the promotion at the beginning of March. That's it.
All right, thank you, Christie. Um, with that, we have issues and correspondence of the selects board. Do I have a volunteer? Yes, Alan.
Okay, so, um, earlier today, um, the Westboro Affordable Housing Trust submitted a grant application to the TD Bank Charitable Foundation. That foundation has an annual grant program called Housing for Everyone that has a total of over seven and a half million dollars in grants. Um, we've applied for, um, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in grant money to fund an emergency rental assistance program, um, similar to what we did during COVID-nineteen. But this would be seed funding for a program that would become sustainable. Um, the trust has allocated, um, a ten percent match of seventeen thousand five hundred dollars to help cover administration costs so that ninety-five percent of that grant, if awarded, would be in direct assistance to Westboro residents. Is, is the select board and the public may remember, the Housing Trust is working on a down payment assistance program to help families move into affordable and market rate homes within Westboro. That would be open to first-time home buyers who are current or recent Westboro residents as well as seniors fifty-five and over and town employees. So we see having a rental assistance program, um, you know, a generalized rental assistance program, paralleling that for renters, the type of assistance we're able to provide for, um, for homeowners. And this would not be, other than that small administrative cost, would not be using trust funds. So we're not pulling money away from development of affordable housing, um, as part of our core mission. So we should hear back in April. Fingers crossed.
Thank you, Alan. Shelby, thank you.
Sure. Yeah, I've got a couple updates from a liaison perspective and a few other things. So, um, the Council on Aging held its meeting on Monday. I was able to attend that. Our assistant town manager was there as well. Always appreciate her being there and offering her insights. The committee sort of focused, uh, the council focused on a couple of different areas. One is they're looking at their role, um, as it relates to the implementation of the senior needs assessment. I will say that a lot of the conversation tended to focus on kind of the community center. What should they be doing to solicit feedback, which was great to hear. But, uh, there was some reassurance that needed to be provided around the, and reinforcement, if you will, of the RFQ that Christie just mentioned, uh, that was going out and, and how that community engagement process would work. So, um, I, I think that, uh, continuing to, um, have those conversations with our seniors and explain what the process is, is going to be important because it can get a little, um, it's lots taken and, and, you know, they're excited, but they're also concerned. And, uh, there was also, it was good to hear them talking about, um, asking questions about what sort of long-term budgeting, like a three-year outlook should they be looking at from a staffing perspective as they look at, um, a move into the community center. So that was, um, uh, part of their dialogue as well. And I was excited that they, one of the, um, new members of the council has already stepped up to, um, be part of a collaborative effort, which I believe Christie had spoken about a couple of meetings ago, to talk about collaborative programming between the library, recreation, senior staff, a senior center staff, and the Council on Aging, uh, really having those dialogue around what programs are happening now and kind of what, I think the intent of it, as I understand it, is what could happen in the near future, community center or, or otherwise, but that collaborative approach. So it's nice to see sort of that actually, um, gaining traction in those meetings taking place. And, uh, the Hakamaka upon reuse committee will meet tomorrow and will be reviewing a, a bid document for an engineering proposal, um, uh, for the priority tasks that were identified at a, at the prior town meeting. So that will take place tomorrow. I do want to thank, uh, so that's sort of the liaison updates. I do want to, um, thank the board. I wasn't able to attend the last meeting. Appreciate your consideration, um, to, um, and thought that, uh, I might have some thoughts on the community center RFQ. I did meet with Christie and shared those with her. So again, thanks to the board for acknowledging that, even though I wasn't at the meeting. And, um, one concern and a couple sort of, I, I guess, kind of celebration and good news. So I, I had a chance along with Sean to meet with the members of the Congregational Church, the men's breakfast. Uh, they had invited us to, uh, speak to them primarily about the community center. There were ultimately about thirty people that were in, um, attendance. And Christie, we're actually able to record that meeting, um, which we can share with you once I have the link so you have a sense of kind of what the dialogue is. That might inform some of the questions for the community engagement or just, you know, um, ideas that are circulating. It wa, it was a great session. Uh, we actually tou, touched on stormwater, uh, uh, as well, uh, just briefly. But, um, and Sean certainly can provide his thoughts here, but I really felt like there were really, really good questions. Some concerns that were shared that we were able to really kind of go through primarily around the, what's really gonna happen with the senior center and so on and so forth. But I, I think the energy in the room was very positive and very supportive of, of, um, the intergenerational, uh, community center that we're moving forward with. So, um, uh, wanna, just wanted to share that with the board. Also, um, the, uh, nonpartisan candidates forum has been announced. That's on, uh, March third at six PM at the Willow, Willow's, uh, Community Recreation, uh, Room that will be recorded by Westboro TV, but it will not be live. That will be recorded by Westboro TV, but it will not be live. The broadcast will be shown later on cable TV and through their streaming, uh, options. And, um, I'm very excited that the plus, I don't know about any of you, but my plastic collection has been accumulating over the winter. So plastic bag recycling has renewed thanks to the work of the Rotary Club and, um, a whole host of community volunteers and students. So Saturday, February 24th at Kohl's is the next collection from 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM. And you can all, and then the next one is March 9th and March 23rd. Uh, you can also drop your plastics off at Central One YMCA. Excited to see Westboro High School, the lobby and Mill Pond as lobbies as collection points. So nice to see that the students have an opportunity to kind of get involved there and staff. If anyone is interested in volunteering, um, as this program grows, the need for volunteers grows. So you can contact the Rotary Club at COTC, C-O-T-E at westbororotary.org if you're interested in volunteering. Super easy lift. It's really just accepting the plastics, weighing them and then tossing them in a bin. And thanks to Kohl's for their partnership. And my final thing, and sadly I'm going to kind of end on a gripe here, but, um, with the nice warmer weather, not today. I've, I've had the opportunity to do more walking around town and I am frankly disgusted at, and this is not a slight to the town staff at all, it's really to the people at the trash in Westboro. I have brought bags with me now to pick up trash and on a walk of less than two miles, I could almost every day fill a plastic, like a kitchen size, plastic bag with trash. And that's dog poop, that's plastic, that's, um, you know, the nip bottles. I mean, it's disgusting and I'm, I'm really frustrated. And so, um, I'm not sure what to do with it, but I wanted to share my gripe here first. Because, um, I wanted the board to be aware, but I also went back and looked at our bylaw. And we do have under Article 46, use of public ways and places, section 14, adopted in, uh, at, um, annual town meeting 2001, a hundred dollar violation for littering in public ways. And this is all public ways that I'm talking about. And so I would be interested in understanding, um, the, how many fines we've actually issued and collected since that bylaw was adopted. And, um, I would be interested in having further discussion with the board about enforcement. Because it's, um, and how we might go about doing that. And maybe it's a campaign, I don't know. But, um, it really made me sad because we have a great town and it's parts of it are starting to look like, quite frankly, crap. And, um, I'll end on a bright note and I was driving back from the transfer station. And there were some cardboard boxes on the road right by the, the blueberry house lady's place. And a DPW truck was coming out from, I think that's Mount Pleasant Road. Don't quote me on that, the one that intersects. And they pulled out behind me and they pulled over to pick up those boxes. So kudos to our, I haven't had a chance to send an email to you, Christie, on that to thank them. But they saw it and they were in their truck. And so kudos to them for recognizing that. So we're going to have paid staff doing that. Westboro, by God, we should be able to do it ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Ian.
Sean, I got nothing this evening, so.
Just quickly, yes. Uh, uh, thank you to Shelby, really including me in her invite to the Congregational Church this past weekend. I thought it was an excellent discussion. Um, they had some good questions and, um, it was, it was, it was, uh, it's great to be there in front of folks who are very enthusiastic about the town. And, uh, you know, want to really fully understand, uh, everything and get involved. So, uh, very good discussion. Also, reminder, this year is the 300th anniversary of the Congregational Church in town, which, uh, you know, is, is just overwhelming and they have just kicked off a fundraiser to do some work specifically. You know, the majority of it on their beautiful steeple on top of the church. Um, so, uh, yeah, I look forward to, to seeing that happen over the course of this year. With that, since Patrick had to leave, I need a volunteer for executive motions. Yes, Shelby, did you have something else?
I know I had way too much time already, but I do want to thank the school committee superintendent search for a successful conclusion of their work in the school committee. And, um, the, um, selection of the new superintendents, Allison Porter. So congratulations on that important process. And, um, I know, um, kind of this side of the street is they, as we say, look forward to working with her.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And I can't help you with the motion because I don't have it in front of me. Sorry.
Yeah, I didn't give anybody time to prepare.
Ian normally likes the long motions, but I'm happy to do it.
Go ahead, Alan.
Okay. I move we enter into, and, and Christie, we need all of them today? I'll just go for it. I move we into.
You don't, you don't need Northland or Freiberg.
Okay. Okay, I'm not seeing.
Second from the bottom and top.
Okay, so I went to the next page. Yep. Okay. So I move we enter into executive session under mass general law, chapter 38, section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with all, the all unions. If the chair determines that an open meeting would have a detrimental impact on the board's position. Under mass general law, chapter 38, section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Ferris Development Group LLC v Town of Westboro Lax Media LLC and Lax Media M A LLC, Worcester Superior Court, CA number 2285 CV 01281. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. Under mass general, uh, mass general law, chapter 38, section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Town of Westboro v Westboro SPE LLC, Boston Suffolk County Land Court, case number 19 TL 000768. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. Under mass general law, chapter 38, section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Westboro SPE LLC v Town of Westboro et al, US District Court, CA number 4:23 CV 12017-MRG. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. Under mass general law, chapter 38, section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation regarding Westboro SPE LLC, US Bankruptcy Court, case number 23-40709. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. Under mass general law, chapter 38, section 2186, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property at 1500 Union Street. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the board's negotiating position. And under mass general law, chapter 38, section 2187, to act under the authority of the select board to approve executive session minutes of January 23rd, 2024 and January 29th, 2024.
Thank you. I declare that an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the board's negotiating, litigating and bargaining position. The board will not be reconvening in open session after executive session. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Roll call vote. Ian.
Johnson, yes.
Shelby.
Marshall, yes.
Alan.
Edinburgh, yes.
And Kio, yes. Thank you, Westboro TV. Thank you, everyone else. Good night.